My apologies for the late start. We had a couple of pre-meetings just to catch up on some things that were going on this week, and they ran a little longer than they should have. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And we'll start with the land acknowledgement. As we gathered this morning, I would like to acknowledge on behalf of council and our community that we are meeting on traditional territory of the First Nations. We would like to thank the Algonquin people and express our rich, oh, sorry, our respect and support for their rich history. We are extremely grateful for their many and continued displays of friendship. We also thank all the generations of people who have taken care of this land for thousands of years. If you could please rise for a moment of silent reflection. Ms. Dombrowski, could you conduct a roll call, please?
Thank you, Warden, and good morning. Counselor Bennett. Counselor Burroughs?
Present.
Counselor Doncaster. Counselor Donahue?
Here.
Warden Niemo?
Present.
Counselor Giardini?
Present.
Counselor Grills?
Present.
Counselor Yon? Counselor Lynch?
Present.
Counselor McKenzie?
Present.
Counselor Mayville?
Present.
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor Nicholson?
Here.
Counselor Service?
Here.
Counselor Watt?
Present.
Counselor Weir?
Here.
And Counselor Wilmer?
Present.
Thank you, and we have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any disclosures of canary interest and the general nature thereof? Seeing none? If I could have a mover for the adoption of the minutes of the May 24, 2024 meeting, Member from Laurentian Hills, seconded by the member from North Algonquin to Wildberforce. Discussion? All those in favor? Sorry, cut out of practice. It's only been a month. So seeing no, and opposed? None, it's carried, thank you, council. And if I could have a motion for the adoption of the special council meeting of May the Mover, member from Bonshire Valley, second member from Madawaska Valley. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None, it's carried, thank you, council. Members of county council, during the month of May, I attended 24 meetings on county business. On May 1, I attended the rededication of Fred Blackstein Way along the Pembroke waterfront to recognise first responders' way. The gathering included County of Renfrew paramedics along with other emergency service providers throughout Renfrew County, as they were honoured as part of the First Responder Day, which has been recognised in Ontario since 2013. First responders past and present took part in the ceremony to unveil the new sign. During the month of May, we have celebrated and acknowledged Emergency Preparedness Week, Mental Health Week, Nurses Week, Essential Services, sorry, Essential Workers Week, National Public Works Week, Personal Support Worker Day, and Paramedic Week. While we have organised, oh, sorry, while we have recognised and celebrated the achievements of our first responders, it's also essential to extend our gratitude not only to the courageous men and women who serve on the front lines, either as paramedics, nurses, essential workers, or public work staff, but also to their families, who offer unwavering support and sacrifice. Their strength and resilience deserve our recognition and appreciation. May 3 was the ribbon-cutting ceremony of our new housing development at Leon Douglas Streets in Pembroke. This was the first home constructed by the County of Renfrew, and we hope that through the collaboration of county staff, council, and interest from members of provincial ministries, stakeholders, and agencies, this is one of many ceremonies celebrating our new builds. I would like to acknowledge and thank our local MPP John Yakubuski and Associate Minister the Honourable Rob Flack for joining us and speaking at the ribbon-cutting ceremony, as well as the financial contribution of the province, which provided the ability to build the new building. I'd also like to thank Mayor Gervais for attending as one of our partners. On May 10, the Community Services Department hosted the 11th Annual May Day event at the Pembroke Civic Centre. May Day provides an opportunity for professionals working in the childcare and early years sectors across Renfrew County to come together for a professional development opportunity. Over 450 people attended this year's event, including educators from licensed childcare centres and homes, early-on child and family services, as well as the Algonquins, oh, sorry, Algonquin College early childhood educated professors and students. Ministry of Education licensing representatives and community services staff attended as well. This was a very interesting and informative day, and if you get the opportunity in the future to attend, it's a very excited and dedicated group, and it's, the interactions are quite interesting, and I learned a lot that day as well. The Mesa Gathering was held on May 22 with over 140 attendees from various agencies that have been affected by the recent surge of people experiencing homelessness, mental health issues, and substance abuse. The County of Renfrew, in conjunction with the Ottawa Valley Ontario Health Team and the Renfrew County District Health Unit, hosted the event to officially launch Mesa, highlighting the collaborative approach to compassionate care and building healthier, more resilient communities. This event was emotional and sparked hard conversations on how to address the root causes of homelessness, substance abuse, and mental health issues, and to implement strategies collectively. The Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus meeting was held in Picton on May 23. At this meeting, we passed the 2024-2027 Strategic Plan, which implements advocacy, priorities, projects, and budgets. We'll be sharing this key document with the municipalities once it is launched, which I believe is next week. We also reviewed, oh, it's actually today. We also reviewed the key infrastructure hire, or infrastructure white paper. It's an evidence-based document that provides our municipalities with thought-provoking analysis, and again, that's, I think, going to be launched in two weeks, so you'll be very, you'll be very impressed with it. This past Monday, May 27, was the County of Renfrew's Queen's Park Day, during the day we spent time in the legislature to listen to Question Period. And we formally met with Ministers Parsa, Kalandra, and Flack, Minister Thompson, Minister Kingat Sirma, MTO Minister Sekeria, and Minister of Mental Health, Michael Tobola. The meetings were incredibly valuable as we discussed the Mesa Programme, our philosophy of housing first, and our concerns of infrastructure funding to the province, and we'll be discussing this later on under new, with more information under new business. I would like to extend my sincere gratitude to the exceptional effort put forth by our MPP John Yakubuski in organising the recent Queen's Park Day. We look forward to the continued collaboration and future endeavours together. The relationship between the county and John underscores the significance of our relationship with our local MPP and the province as a whole. So once again, thank you, John, for your unwavering support and dedication to serving our community. Despite the short notice, the event was executed with remarkable efficiency and professionalism. I'd like to acknowledge the county staff and our CAO, who dedicated their time to ensuring a seamless, engaging, and productive day. I, along with county staff and Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, attended the Eastern Ontario Housing Summit on May 28, which collaborated with several organisations, including the Ontario Home Builders Association. The summit delved into the coordination efforts among regions and agencies to ensure present and future residents have ample housing options that will address affordability and needs, and then also align with individuals' lifestyles. The Silver Chain Challenge is back for another year, but with a new twist. While we're still encouraging residents of Renfrew County to get out and be active during the month of June, this time, we really would like it if you were to share your photos of cycling, hiking, and walking adventures. So please start planning your upcoming adventures. We can't wait to see what you get up to during the month of June. Let's get active and help Renfrew County win this friendly competition with Lennar County. We'll be sharing some of the details soon about how you can share your photos for a chance to win some really great prizes. A media release has been issued on the county website with more details. I look forward to next Friday's Wardens Golf Tournament on June 7 at the Dragonfly Golf Course in Renfrew/Amistin Bromley. We still have a few spots open for those who are interested. I will remind those assembled here of the following. The County of Renfrew, experience our history, share our future. This concludes my address for this session of county council. And now we move to delegations, and Mr. Kelly, I believe. Yep?
Thank you, Warden, and good morning, council. So it's also a pleasure to, well, to welcome Jade Newman to the council chambers. Once a year, we're able to put together this really nice big foam cheque that you can't put in a bank machine, but I guarantee that I will be handing her a new one. So throughout the year, we do a few fundraising efforts, and this one is a result of county staff who have dedicated funds from their paychecks every pay period towards United Way. So today, we are proud to present $1,249.65 to the United Way of Renfrew County. So Jade, here you are, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You know, we appreciate Jade's initiatives, and, well, in jean days as well, so we, yeah, sometimes we wear jeans. Jade was a part of the Mesa Gathering last weekend, and very happy to be collaborating with United Way in the future on some of the initiatives moving forward. But Jade, you have a, you have an audience, should you wish to say a few words? Here you are. Perfect, there you are.
Good morning, everyone. It's my pleasure to be here with you today. On behalf of United Ways to Ontario, thank you to county staff for your generous and continued support of the work we do right here in Renfrew County. I've been reflecting quite a lot recently on Warden Peter Niemo's recent comments at the Mesa Gathering last week, and apologies for paraphrasing you, Warden. Renfrew County is facing severe and significant challenges, and we cannot depend on someone coming from the outside to help us fix these problems. It's going to take collective collaborative action, working together with partners and communities across Renfrew County in a united way to create positive and measurable impact. And for that reason, and for so many other reasons, we are proud to continue to partner with the County of Renfrew to help build a better Renfrew County for all. Thank you, merci. Mi gueche.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate it. No, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll do a.
We'll do quick one with the do check.
Sure.
I'm fortunate to interact with and meet with Jade on a regular basis, and I'm always impressed with her energy and her knowledge of our community, and lots of suggestions which evolve into initiatives and then to success. So Jade, thank you, as always, I really appreciate what you do. Okay, and Ms. Patrick, would you like to introduce her? Oh, Chair Giardini, please.
So I'm very pleased to introduce Catherine Cruthers from Senior Women Living Together. So after many years of working in the labour movement and as a consultant, Catherine helps non-profits create professional-level technology. Excuse me. She's also on the Board of Telecommunities Canada and has volunteered with Canada Learning Code and on the Green Team at Blues Fest and City Folk in Ottawa. We're very pleased that this grassroots organisation is now operating in Renfrew County, and I believe is currently in negotiations with some of our municipalities. She's the Chair of our Board of, the Board of Directors of Senior Women Living Together. Thank you, Catherine, for your work towards ending homelessness for senior women in Renfrew County. Welcome.
Thank you, Anne. Anne covered who I am, so I'll spend my time talking about SWLT. Okay. Ah, okay. Okay, I pressed too many times. Do, do, do. Okay, Senior Women Living Together is a small non-profit, hoping to become larger. Well, with nonprofits, there's always the hope that you'll be bigger, and the hope that your need will be met and you'll disappear. But we're just starting out, and our goals are to actually not provide housing so much as provide a platform where senior single women can find compatible homemates and create homemade groups that can then find appropriate housing for their needs and wants, and thereby free up other housing. So like if we've got three women who are currently living in single apartments, and they're lonely, and running over their budget, and all of that kind of stuff, if they can meet each other, create a compatible homemade group, move into one home together, then that frees up their previous housing. So we, okay, I'm usually good with technology. My core is technology, but, so, we were founded in 2019 by a wonderful lady named Pat Dunn, who is currently our executive director, and I just want to kind of highlight that it's an all-volunteer organisation so far. We're very grassroots, and we have no paid staff, including Pat, even though she works pretty much full-time now on helping other women achieve what she's found. So she formed the group originally as a Facebook group, just looking for homemates for herself after her husband died, and she found herself in a position where her income was not sufficient to meet her needs. So she found her homemade group, then they found an investor who bought a house for them to rent. So it's affordable housing coming from the community. So we're a registered Canadian not-for-profit. We're currently active in Ontario, and this year, we've started reaching out to specific regions in Ontario through county organisations. So Renfrew County is our first region because our volunteer who came up with the plan to split things out regionally is currently living in Arnhem Prior, and I'm just over the river in Shawville, so it's easy for me to get here and meet with groups of women and encourage them to follow our process. We're hoping to roll out nationally in the next couple of years, but we need, we need to really establish repeatable processes so that it's not as dependent on a single person or a small group of people working all the time to form these homemade groups. So we currently have, we changed it to over 60 because the number has been climbing up in the last few months, so we got tired of changing the slides every week. And what we provide, again, is the platform for the women. We're also currently, we've come to an arrangement with a housing organisation in Toronto where they are reserving a few of their affordable apartments for us. They had apparently too many two-bedroom apartments, and so they were unaffordable for a single person to move into, but if we can provide them with two people who've already checked each other out, they're happy to earmark a couple of apartments for us at no cost to Senior Women Living Together because we have no money. So we're just trying to get more people. Okay, the need we're meeting, I'm sure everybody around here understands the need for affordable housing, especially in the last few years with the rise in housing prices and lack of new builds in an affordable way. So when we were looking at the statistics, that we decided that this is how we, as volunteers, can help alleviate that. That's more statistics. So I really wanted to spend most of our time on our process, so it's, we have a website called swlt.ca, where, aside from our Facebook group that's still ongoing, and so women can come there, they fill out a questionnaire that has all kinds of compatibility questions, kind of like a dating site, but in order to find compatible homemates. And then we've got a ton of information that we've gleaned through Pat's experience, like when she started it, and then over the last five years, we've added a lot of articles and blog posts about, you know, different things that come up and how to deal with them before they become issues. You can also filter through the profiles on our website, once you're a member, and find your small group of people, and then meet with them. And then we have a template called a homemade agreement, so it's not a legal lease or anything. It doesn't involve the actual housing at that point. It's basically the values and rules that the homemates agree on to make the co-living experience easier. And then they find suitable accommodations, and we do have now, we're starting to get more and more landlords coming to us or housing organisations saying, okay, we have this available now, do you have a group ready to move in? So we can sometimes assist people in finding appropriate accommodations. We also have volunteers who are very, very familiar with the Rental Tenancy Act, so they can help people with negotiating with landlords who, for instance, don't want to have multiple people on the lease, and how they're going to sort that kind of stuff out. So, but our process is really focused on the homemates. We've gotten a few small grants, and we've gotten some donations over the last few years. Most of them have gone to, kind of like, supporting our website, because that's our main method of communicating with everyone, and also in kind of nonprofit preparedness, because we did start out a couple of years ago with just Pat and the people who were willing to help her, and now we've got a functioning Board of Directors, and we've got various program areas with volunteers in charge of them, and, like I said, we're rolling out the regional stuff. That last line there is, we got a grant from New Horizons for Seniors Programme to target three regions in Ontario to do exactly this kind of stuff, outreach, and getting out into the community with our volunteers to talk about the programme and encourage and help women sign up. But not Renfrew County sadly, because we'd already started here, so New Horizons wouldn't cover it. Okay, we're looking for partnerships. We had discussed as a board whether we should reach out to do advocacy about our issues, and basically, we've decided that there are enough other advocacy organisations out there, so while we will occasionally, you know, support a petition on something, our most recent issue that came up was landlords not allowing additional people to sign a lease. So like if one homemade moves out and somebody else moves in, the landlords want to renegotiate the entire lease instead of just having the new homemade move in. And that's a risk for everybody in our groups, so, but rather than starting up an entire advocacy wing of our organisation and dividing our resources that way, we've decided to partner with other organisations. We're also happy to partner with builders and landlords and other groups, as long as our input is basically supporting our members. So our objective this year is to increase our membership, because what we're finding as, as we reach out to, especially in smaller communities, we know the women are there that need these programmes, but we need to get a kind of a critical mass of people filling out profiles on the site, so that, you know, if you come to Berry's Bay or whatever, like if you're filtering in those communities, you- if you're filtering in those communities, you have more than two or three people to meet with and form groups. Because it's, most of our issues have come up when people move in too quickly and they haven't discussed all of, like they've discussed the big issues like, do you want to have dogs in the house or smoking or whatever? And we try to do everything, like everything, every question we have is non-judgmental, it's just a matter of compatibility. So we're finding that people need more time and more discussions on a lot more things to have a successful homemade group. So we're pushing to find more members. That's our primary goal right now. To do that, we're doing this kind of outreach, we're doing some social media stuff, we're encouraging discussions outside of just our community. So we want people thinking in terms of, oh, I'm going to tell my neighbour or I'm going to tell my mum or, you know, whatever, instead of just directly approaching our member audience. We want to find other audiences to get the word out. And what we need, what we're looking for funding for, if anybody has any funding opportunities, is in order to increase that, the number of homemade groups, we really need to improve our website. I built it four years ago, it's ugly, you know, and it's showing the strain of hundreds of women going through and looking for things. And so we want to do some technical upgrades, we want to do some marketing and advertising, and especially kind of outside of social media because, again, our target group is older women, a lot of them are not on the internet. And we would like to be able to pay some of the people who are doing a lot of this work, especially the programme administrators and the people who are keeping track of all of these things for us. I think that's the end of it. Yeah, it's not going any further.
Okay, thank you. So what I'll do is, we'll field, are there any questions or comments from members of council? So I'll go with the member from the town of Arnhem Prior and then Boncher Valley.
Thank you Chair. Ma'am, have you ever considered widowers who are still living at home as a source of a place to be?
Not yet. We've decided that, because at every one of these presentations and all of our outreach efforts, we get questions about, you know, what about the men and what about the homeless people and stuff like that? And we're, again, we're like currently eight volunteer board members. And so we've decided that we, like we will partner with other groups that are doing similar things, but we have our focus on just reaching our target audience right at the moment. Yeah.
Supplementary?
Thank you.
Okay, and also, if you're familiar with the landlord-tenant laws in Ontario, one of the reasons we haven't really, like we encourage homeowners to join as members, but we ask them to sign a declaration because if you're living in a home owned by someone else or where the leaseholder, the single leaseholder is someone else, you have no rights under the current Ontario Landlord Tenant Act, so, or the Residential Tenancy Act. But, so like all of the rights to appeal an eviction or even the, you know, the condition of the home and all of that kind of stuff is not covered if the homeowner or leaseholder, single leaseholder is present. So we've developed an agreement for homeowners and leaseholders to sign that they will respect, like they'll act as if they're covered by all of the Ontario laws, but you don't actually have recourse through those laws to appeal anything. So it would, you'd have to go to small claims court or something and you're still, you know, then you've got homeless women again.
I'll admit I'm not, I don't know that.
Anyway.
So my thought is, we have in Arnhem Prior, a number of veterans' wives that are living by themselves, don't have a lot of friends and are looking for company. So as a source of a place to live with compatibility, and they're older, they're more than your 55 or 60 years old for sure, and so I'm thinking part of your, I hate the word, the stock of people that are looking for places to marry up with the people that have the house.
Yeah.
So I haven't heard of this programming and I'm sure the ladies we know in Arnhem Prior haven't heard of it either, but if there's a message we can relay, which we've got today, we certainly will. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think I've done a talk in Arnhem Prior yet. I've been making my way around the county. But, and we will go talk to anywhere, you know, anyone we're invited to. Yeah.
Thank you. The member from Boncher Valley, please.
Thank you Warden. Thanks Catherine, this is very interesting. Sad that it has to be, but you found a very good solution to a problem that I'm sure many people didn't think of, and my question was exactly what you just answered. If we know of people that have these homes and presumably women over a certain age will be responsible tenants, we should ask them to put their names forward to your organisation. My other question that you didn't answer was, what qualifies as a senior?
We're currently saying 55 and older.
Okay.
Because it's, and what we're finding is that it also, it works well, you know, if everybody's not identical, but like if you have one person still working and one person may be semi-retired and somebody retired, then they can support each other in different ways as long as they have, you know, that baseline of values and shared, I mean, you know what it's like. Like we don't want to have roommates that are, you know, each in their own little box because we're, aside from the shared housing, we're also looking for companionship.
Okay, and the member from Laurentian Valley and then Kilu Hargi Richards. Sorry, Laurentian Hills, my apology.
Thank you Catherine. So just a quick scenario here, I have a home, a second home, and I want, I don't want to be involved in dealing with tenants and renting it out. So I contact you and I say, I've got a three-bedroom home, you're going to do all the work in getting the tenants for me.
We're not trying to position ourselves as like an agency that manages the leases. If you call us and say, okay, I've got a house in blah, and we have a group, like the right number of women who have signed their homemade agreement and are just looking for housing, we would certainly introduce you to them, but you would still be the landlord. Yeah.
Supplementary?
And will I pay a fee for that as the landlord?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No, I mean, if you want to give us money, we'll take it. And like, we are always looking for ways to increase our funding so that we can do more. But like, because the price of brochures is just astronomical.
Okay, thank you. Kilu Hargi Richards, please.
Thank you Chair. First off, I really like your logo. I think it's awesome.
Oh, thank you. I didn't do it.
Your logo at the bottom of the page? I think it's really good, very catchy. My question would be, first off, you'd probably have to build a base in a municipality. What would be the process for the municipality to participate or to help the process?
Okay, so the resources we have currently are, like it's basically on our website and through our Facebook groups. We're asking everyone interested in membership to join their local groups so that they can start chatting with each other. And then, I think our biggest need right now is, yeah, women to join the groups, like we need that kind of mass of interest to make it useful. And we're also looking for free or low-cost places where a group of women can hang out and talk to each other, like to have actual meetings. Because most, the vast majority of our membership are declaring that they have very low incomes. Like when you come to our membership page, it says, we would like you to pay X number of dollars, I think it's $9 a month, $9.95 a month or something like that. It's a small amount. Or if you're low income, just click here and come in for free. Because we're more interested in getting, and there's no means testing for, like you don't have to prove you're low income, but what we've found is that about 80% of the women who've joined our site are declaring that they're quite low income. So we're looking not to spend more money, like we don't want them spending more of their money to meet other people. So, yeah, but it's basically come to our website and sign up.
Supplementary?
Thank you Chair. So would you be willing to come to specific council meetings?
Oh sure.
And discuss this?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member from North Ogallon to Wilberforce, please.
Thank you Chair, and through you Catherine, what a fantastic initiative that you're taking on. And I've quickly spoken to two of my colleagues from neighbouring municipalities. We would love if you could come to the Echo Centre in Eaganville, which is already a...
Oh, been there.
Oh, you've been there?
I was there two weeks ago. Yeah.
Fantastic, you're ahead of me.
It was fun. It was fun. It was a lunch thing, yeah.
So you've already been there, but that's a great place in our community to certainly make some of those connections. So I'm glad to hear that you've already used to the bunch.
Thank you, and Boncher Valley.
Sorry, thank you. We thought it was a good idea because we were going to bring our councils. I will present this to my council, but if they want more information, you're willing to go to every council.
Sure.
Good to know. Thank you Catherine, appreciate it.
And I'm always happy to go back to Eaganville. It's...
Thank you. You may be expanding your horizons. I see the mayor from Greater Madawaska.
Thank you Warden through you. I'm just wondering, a quick question. We have some ladies in my area that their husbands are hospitalized with Alzheimer's and such. Is it open to them as well? Because theoretically, they are, they are very single because of the situation they're in, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, again, there's no like means test or home inspection or anything, like we're just trying to find compatible women to share housing.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further questions. Thank you very much for a very informative presentation. As you can see, the interest is there. We're always trying to add different services which generate healthy outcomes for our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And Mr Davis, I think you're going to introduce our next delegation, thank you.
Yes, thank you Warden, and good morning everyone and good morning our viewing public. I'm pleased to have here with us Mr Derek Nyber, the President and Chief Executive Officer of the Forest Products Association of Canada. Not only is he a local person, but he has a well extensive bio. So before he starts his presentation, just to read a couple of his items that he has in his past. Before FPAC, seven years as Senior Vice President of the Food and Consumer Products of Canada, three years as the Senior Vice President of Public Affairs and Retail Council of Canada, and relatively recent, a number of years as a senior political position within the Government of Ontario. So welcome Derek and pleased to have you here.
Great, you missed the most important part. I'm from the valley, so I'm, it's always nice to come home and I grew up out in Alice Township or Laurentian Valley. My mum and dad, we lost my dad suddenly last month, but my mum is still out on Sandy Beach Road. And before I get into the presentation, I wanted to say thank you for VTAC. As somebody who lives a couple hours from aging parents, my mum and dad who paid into the system for their entire lives are now finding that some parts of that system are not there for them. But VTAC's been a lifeline when they lost their family doctor and through my dad's illness. And for my mum to keep up with appointments and keep up with her tests, as we all know, that's going to save the healthcare system in the long run. So I want to thank this council and the leadership in the, on the, on the public service side of the county for the work there. I think it's a unique programme and count me among your greatest advocates. If you ever need, I'd be happy to go and advocate at any level of government for more money to keep that programme, helping people like it did for my dad and is continuing to help my mum. So thank you for that.
That's a great offer, thank you. I run into Derek either Billy Bishop or Queen's Park or sometimes in Ottawa, so if he's going to advocate on our behalf, we're halfway home. So thank you very much for that offer.
Yeah, so I couldn't, my mum told me to say that by the way, so I want to, I want to make sure I got it, I want to make sure I got it on the record. So, but what I want to, what I want to do today, and I've just, so we're an industry association representing the forest sector and its workers across the country. You know, you won't see Hydaman's or Holcoms or Murray Brothers or McCray's or Gulick's logos on this slide, but there's not anything that I don't do where I'm not thinking about those mills in the valley and the privilege of working with an association where really the work that we're doing on behalf of a lot of these companies is going to raise all boats in the forest sector, in the county and across the country. So, and in short, our mandate is really anything that the federal government touches or that industry touches vis-à-vis federal government. So federal carbon policy, transportation policy, federal species at risk requirements, really anything touching the federal government space, air, water emissions. So you see some stuff that connects provincially and federally, water, carbon, those kinds of things, there's a bit of overlap. So there's another group called the Ontario Forest Industries Association or OFIA, which some of you might know, that I know a number of the mills in the valley are members of and we work very closely with them. And I talk to, talk to the gang here in the county quite regularly to stay on top of things. And there's a few things kind of going on in the sector and I really want to talk a bit about just some of the broader trends. You might have heard, you know, we lost a, we lost a mill in Trenton, Ontario, there's a line down in Temiskaming, a pulp mill's closed in Espinola, a pulp mill is closed in Terrace Bay, Ontario. And those communities might seem far from here, but those impacts are felt by the mills and the rioting. And I'll talk a little bit about the interdependent nature of our industry and how we're connected and we're really part of a bigger ecosystem. And I think in the case of the province of Ontario, the decisions that government is going to be making in the next two years is going to set the stage for where the forest sector goes in this province in the next 20. So we're at a very, very critical time and I want to put a bit of a point on that. I also want to talk about how we work with other municipal leaders across the country. I met with the mayor of Kenora a few weeks ago, I'm meeting with Mayor Boschkov in Thunder Bay on Tuesday. When I'm there, there's a lot of opportunities and I think communities like those in the county, you know, you go to Queen's Park, you go to the Parliament Hill, like it is an urban suburban agenda. We've got to fight smarter, we've got to fight a bit harder, and that means working with steelworkers in uniform, that means working with municipal leaders, that means working with chambers of commerce. So we really got to work together. And so today is also an opportunity for me to remind you that we're here and we're here to help you and we're here to help the workers that rely on this industry here in Renfrew County. I also want to talk about a really cool idea I have for CFP Petawawa and biomass. So I want to leave that and then I'll maybe throw that over to Cheryl Gallant to see if she can do some work on that file. So let me start with a bit of Forestry 101. I also want to talk about... I also want to talk a bit about wildland fire. So I think parts of Renfrew County based on the Great Lakes St. Lawrence Forest, and I'm sure Lacey has talked about that before, and we're really fortunate to have Lacey. You know, I'm not sure if it's understood beyond these walls about the reach that she has across the province and across the country and even internationally in terms of the level of respect. And I think we've got a lot of good things going for us beyond Lacey and the county, and that's some great family businesses that have invested money and probably took out mortgages and took some real risk to invest in their business and provide jobs here. I think of Shaw Woods. I think of our committed logging and hauling contractors here. We've got a lot of them. They're aging, but they're a pretty committed group. And I think there's a history of this council getting behind the forest sector, and I hope that'll be the, you know, some new faces around the table since I was here last, but I hope that'll continue to be, to be the case. So let me start, the next slide here, there we go. I don't think, like, I would challenge anybody in the room to see what industry and country is working on, fire and climate adaptation, safe and affordable housing, rural and economic, rural and northern economic development, biodiversity conservation, emissions reduction, and indigenous reconciliation. Like, we're doing all this big stuff at the same time. And I don't think I've ever seen our sector more front and center in terms of trying to provide these solutions and partnerships at the municipal level. And it's not lost in me how big the affordable housing file is, and I think our sector can play a real role in supporting you in that. So maybe just, and again, I'm going to assume people in the room don't know much about forestry, so I don't want to insult anybody here who might be, you know, from a community that is very, very intimately involved. But there's a few things I think that are important to note, and when I go to international meetings, like, Canada is a really different case. And one of the reasons we're so different is because the trees are the people's trees. You know, we've got a lot of woodlot owners and a lot of private land, but primarily, like, 90% of the forestry that's happening in Canada is on lands under the purview of provincial governments. And what comes with that is a high test of social license and it's, you know, community approvals, indigenous and non-indigenous community consultation, and making sure that, you know, every bird, mammal, and fish in the bush is considered as harvesting plans are developed. So that's a profile. That's a very, very, that puts Canada, I think, you know, Scandinavia, Finland, Sweden are probably about 60% private, maybe 40% public, or in that range. But Canada's really in a unique position here. And I think it's what makes us better, but it's also what makes doing forestry a bit more challenging and difficult on some days, given, given the fact that these are the people's trees. And I just want to give you a window, you know, you probably heard from Lacey and the team here a lot about the forests here in the Great Lakes St. Lawrence region. But if you look at Canada's forests, you know, 75% of Canada's forests are boreal. So that's the big green swath you're seeing there. And you've got other forests. You've got some of the coastal forests on the west. You've got Acadian in the east, and of course, Great Lakes St. Lawrence across the southern part of Ontario into Quebec. And, you know, I always, when I'm talking, so let me be clear. I think we should all be activists and environmentalists. So I'm very, very careful when I use those words. So when I talk about the activists that I'm challenged by on some days, it's the zero-sum game equal radicals who don't want anything, basically. It becomes very, very challenging. And one of the myths that I often hear from that group is this sense that we're going to run out of trees and we're harvesting everything. In this graph, you'll see very clearly the purple being the managed forest and the green areas being protected and conserved areas, or areas that are what we would call above the cut line, or that would not be available for forestry at all. So you'll see about, about half of Canada's forests are managed. Out of those, out of that 50%, about half of that is set aside for some conservation measure. And right now, across the country, we're harvesting about 0.5% of the trees available for harvest, and they're replaced at a two-to-one or a three-to-one ratio, depending on the provincial rules. So the system in Canada is very robust to make sure that we're not going to run out of trees. And the last Yale University study showed that we have about 9,000 trees for every Canadian. So I'm worried about the fire piece in terms of it cutting into that. That's probably our biggest risk, but I'll get into that a little bit later. And the other thing that's really great, not only here in the county but across the country, is we have this, this thing called third-party certification. So that's above all the federal, provincial rules, policy regulations, another layer of third-party independent auditing. And 77% of Canada's managed forests are certified, and just 11% of the world's forests are independently certified. So the sustainability or social license test beyond our rules and regs set by government, we're a leader in independent third-party certification, including here in Renfrew County. And I use this, this is just, I just wanted to refer to this as an example. This is an example of one of the, one of the, one of the research pieces on our website that tries to explain to people who think we're just going down and mowing down the forest, the care and the planning that goes, and Lacey could probably walk you through every single piece on this graph, but, but just the detail and the consideration and the planning that goes into managing our forest before a tree is harvested. So last year, you know, we got a bit of a scare in Fort Nelson this year, a bit of a scare around Fort McMurray this year already. But last year, we had about 19 million hectares burnt by fire. So to put that in some, so 19 million hectares burned by fire. Last year, we harvested probably about 700,000 to 800,000 hectares. So 25 times the amount of forest land that we would, we would manage and replace or renew was affected by fire. 19 million burned, 700,000 to 800,000 harvested. So that just gives you the sense of scale we're looking at when it comes to fire today. And the federal government puts out this, something called the State of Canada's Forest Report. And you'll see here that the area deforested, that tends to be more, it could be municipal land development, it could be agriculture versus there's the area harvested. Now, this is 2022, that's the area burned. That's going to jump up big time in the 2023 numbers. But then the area affected by insects. And this, I think you've heard a lot about various insects affecting forests here in the county, and that becomes a problem because once the insects come in, then the wood trees start to die, they become drier, they become more susceptible to fire, they become more susceptible to blowdowns. So the pest piece and that boots-on-the-ground bit of work that Lacey and other foresters are doing here across Renfrew County is so critical. So I like to share this slide because I don't think people truly understand the scale and the relative issue in terms of the insects, the fire, to what we're actually managing in Canada. It's pretty, it's pretty, I still find it pretty shocking, how bad the fire and insect picture is getting in Canada. And I know here, on some of the blowdowns that have been happening in the county over the past few years, very, very concerning. And I wanted to share this. This is from the boreal forest in Alberta, but you'll see the area that burned there, you know, older forests are more susceptible to fire. So this was from one of the flyovers we did after the fire season last year, and the area that sustained was the younger forest. The area burned in the middle was 90 to 100-year-old stand. So it's amazing how resilient younger forests are. And this gets into the whole, again, back to the activist counterpoint in terms of this, you know, protect it, protect it, protect it, don't cut anything down. At some point, trees die. They don't live forever. And across our boreal forests, you're probably looking at 80, 90 years. Every forest's going to be different. You're going to get some forests in the county here, the white pines will probably get up to a couple hundred years old. But, but, but trees die. So, and when they die, they become carbon emitters, they become susceptible to blowdowns, they become susceptible to fire, and we also lose the economic opportunity that comes with harvesting and then renewing that forest for future generations. So I leave this with you. I'm not going to go through the detail here, but this gets to my point around the interrelatedness. So if you're talking to any mill owner or mill worker here in the county, and this is why those pulp mill closures really matter, because a big part, if you're running a saw mill in Eaganville or Killaloo, you're going to be, it's pretty important about where your chips and your bark is going to go. That's a pretty important financial part of your business model beyond just producing lumber. And what we're seeing here is with those other pulp mills down, the options in terms of places to sell your chips becomes reduced, and it really skews the market a little bit. And I might also put in a plug with, for Roseburg. The MDF plant here as a place to send chips and residuals to is absolutely critical to the vitality of the industry in the Ottawa Valley. I think we saw market confidence when we saw Ensign get going and we saw Roseburg get going again. And if, you know, people ask me in terms of what are the solutions, I think one of the biggest solutions is those mills, including pulp mills, MDF plants, that we have operating now, how can we continue to get them to be more innovative? What can we do to bolster them? How can we put a ring around those mills to strengthen those jobs? I'm not big on feeding dinosaurs. I don't think we should be throwing money down black holes just to prop things up, but we've got some real assets in this province and in the valley that are worth backing. And they can be backed in a way that's going to improve the innovation, the productivity of those mills, and secure those jobs for decades to come. So anyway, I'm leaving this slide with you, but this is a nice referral slide in terms of understanding, kind of the flow of the value chain within forestry. And I'll say, we don't do a good job in Canada being very deliberate about managing this and mapping it out. You go to Sweden or Finland, it's incredible in terms of how the entire value chain is considered. You know, downtown Stockholm is run, is powered and heated by woodchips. You know, they've got a district heating system in downtown Stockholm. And I think that district heating opportunity, and this is my CFP Petawawa plug, because this has been studied so many, so many times at our Canadian Forests bases. But let me give you some stats on Petawawa. And I think it's worth another look and a conversation with DND. So I'm going, so 61% of federal emissions are under DND. 38% of government buildings are at DND. And DND has made a commitment to reduce GHG's, greenhouse gas emissions, by 40% from a 2005 baseline by the year 2030, not including their fleet. Garrison Petawawa is, and this was back 2016 data, Garrison Petawawa is the number six emitter of GHG emissions out of 29 military bases across the country. CFP Petawawa has 30 kilometers of steam pipes under it. It has 53 megawatt boiler capacity that's currently powered by natural gas. And the ability to switch and expand, now, this is not a one-year, but this is probably a two, three-plus-year opportunity. And when I talk about biomass, I want to be very careful. There's no environmental benefit and no economic benefit to cutting down trees to burn them. It's all about highest value you can get in that part. And in some parts, the highest value is going to be heating systems. And I really think that there've been a number of studies done federally, and I think it is time to, for a revisit at CFP Petawawa and at other military bases to see, will district heating by biomass work? And I think there's an opportunity here. And I think longer term, that could serve mills in this community in terms of a certainty of where to send those chips, or I hate calling it waste, but if it's not used, it is waste. That could offer a bit of a future lifeline. So that's something I would be interested in pursuing and talking to council about and seeing if we could get DND maybe to move in that direction. So let me, before I talk about why I think the sector is worth supporting, let me talk maybe a bit about a few of the things where I think there's an opportunity for the county and unions and industry and maybe other municipalities to work together. Procurement is one area. Canada's going to have about another 10 million people by 2050. The world's going to have about 2 billion people. I tell my friends in the steel and cement sectors, there's going to be lots of market for everybody. This population is growing. People are looking for lower-carbon building. My ask to you and to other municipalities is think about wood in your procurement decisions. Think about wood for building and think about wood for heating. It might not work everywhere, but I think the innovation that's happening in mass timber construction and in wood building systems, it ain't what it was 20 years ago. And I think on the cost-competitive side, you'd be very surprised to see how wood would stack up. It looks pretty darn nice, too. If you've been into the library in Calgary or to the new George Brown College tower that's being built, or the, or the Brock Commons residence at the University of British Columbia. So I think, but my caution to those in procurement is, don't think about wood halfway through, because then it gets very expensive to kind of reverse-engineer the plans. But at the beginning of any procurement plan, think about wood. And how might that fit? And it might not fit everywhere, and it might not fit the whole building, but I think you'd be surprised in terms of some of the solutions, how cost-effective they can be and how beautiful they'll be, and what a great signal to send to a community that was really built on this, on this industry. Just a couple things here before I close on some of the polling stats. You know, if you talk to any family-owned company or a publicly traded company, it doesn't matter what's going to drive investment in capital, it's security, what we would call in the business, access to fiber, access to economic fiber. That's access, predictable access to wood fiber that we can get at. If there's not, if there's not a guarantee that the fiber basket is going to be there for 20-plus years, it's going to be tough to secure real investment. And the rules of the game can change in the second period. Like, this is what we're seeing in a lot of parts. BC is a textbook case in how to destroy a forest sector. Rules always changing, lack of clear support by the government, brutal fires, some stuff beyond the government's control. But I would say the lack of a coherent policy agenda focused on managing the forest for health and resiliency and protecting and growing jobs. So let's not, let's not be British Columbia. Tax fairness is another one. I'm not going to get into a debate on carbon tax here today, but I will tell you this. I have a hard time looking at a forestry contractor who cannot get a rebate on the carbon tax or their fuel charge when a fisher or a farmer can. Very, very tough message for me to explain to our forestry contractors across the country. And an answer that I'm still not getting the adequate response from the federal government on. And I think when you see that kind of inconsistency in carbon policy, I think people start to question, how fair is this and is this making a difference? So that's the only thing I'm going to say on carbon pricing, because I just don't want to go down the rabbit hole. And as I said, I think the other opportunity is on that joint advocacy with federal and provincial leaders to tell our story. I think we spend more time trying to explain how forestry is done. There are a lot of myths, and there is a very, very small but very well-organized groups out there working together who don't want to see any forestry or mining or oil and gas on the land. That'll bring me to the numbers here. And I think any politician would take these numbers. So we do rolling, rolling polls over the course of the year, and the most recent poll showed us, and I think the biggest issue we have in forestry and in the forest sector is informing those who do not have an opinion about us. And as our cities get bigger and as we welcome more and new people to this country, it's difficult to explain what forestry is all about. But if you look at the very positive and positive impressions, about half of Canadians or half of Canadians are there. So the kind of lover-to-hater ratio here is probably about four-to-one-ish. The biggest issue I think that keeps me up at night is, you know, about 40% of Canadians don't know what to think about forestry. And it's that 40% that I'm going to continue to think about and continue to try to talk to, to talk about our solutions and our contributions. And the last one I'll see here, you know, listen, if anybody in politics or any industry, if you want to be with the farmers, right? The farmer numbers, right? I won't single Mayor Donahue here, but the farmers are very, very popular. You see the numbers here, people are behind Canadian farmers. And I would share with you in the same poll, very, very positive attitudes toward foresters and forestry companies as well. So I think we've got a tremendous base to build on. I think in a community like the county, I think we've got, we've got a better understanding than in most parts of the province and the country on, on the care the industry takes, the importance of the industry to, to the community. But I would also say that we can't sit on our laurels, and the industry needs to continue to do its part to demonstrate, to walk the talk on sustainability and conserving biodiversity and supporting species at risk while delivering good products and good jobs. And I think there are opportunities with municipal partners, industry unions, and others to work together to make sure that this industry continues to grow. It's different than it was. But, but as I said, the demand, given growing population, the World Bank says demand for timber is going to be up 40% by 2050. I'd rather see that timber coming from, from the Ottawa Valley and from Canada than the Congo Basin or Russia, to be honest. So I'll leave it there, and I'm happy to take any questions. I want to thank the warden and council, and I'd like to thank the clerk as well and Tina for their help in setting me up here today.
Thank you. And before we take any questions, just to fill you in a little bit, the Ontario Winter Games were extremely successful, but one of the first people in the door with a cheque was Holcom's. And so we had all of our volunteers outfitted, and so they purchased, I guess, about 5,000 shirts, and we designed them, and they just hand over a cheque, and didn't really want any publicity, of course. Hydaman's came in with a cheque, went up and talked to Dana Shaw. We were looking for something unique, a unique experience for our opening games. So he sawed the ends of his posts for us, his hydroposts, and so we put 1,000 of those down for the athletes. down for the athletes to sit on. Unfortunately, we had a blizzard, and I think they tripped over them. I emailed them at 6:15 in the morning, and I had the confirmation they were in at 6:16, and a check like four hours later. So the sector has responded every time we've asked for something. And I've been to Queen's Park with Lacy, I think, for three different ministers of Natural Resources now and various members of the sector. So we're very closely intertwined with them.
Thank you.
Thank you. And questions, comments, Bonshire Valley and then Laurentian Hills?
Thank you, Warden, and thanks, Derek. It's so lovely to see you. It's interesting that you talked about Fort Nelson. My aunt and uncle live in Fort Nelson, in the town proper, and were evacuated to Fort St. John, just arrived home yesterday. And one of the things that they talked about was good forestry management around the town. And that came up over and over and over again. And I know that anybody in this room that's been part of a disaster here in Renfrew County, when Mayor Fraser of Fort Nelson was on TV talking, you could see the progression of he was very hopeful and then his hopes were dashed. So I know the rain and such helped. But when you speak about people and the people that are very unfavorable about cutting down any tree, doing any forest management, including burning, although the smoke would have been terrible, I think that, and I'm not, this is my question, do you agree that the people, the homeowners, would have had a better sense that their homes weren't going to burn down because of the forest management around the town? And I think that those people in the dark red need to understand it goes both ways. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. And I had the privilege of being in Fort Nelson just before the pandemic. It's about 100 kilometers south of the Alaskan border. Beautiful community, but one of the things that happened there, there was a mill closure there, and forest management kind of stopped for the last 10 or so years. Things have just kicked off again through a partnership with Fort Nelson First Nation. But this is where, and I'm not blaming the entire fire on the fact that there was no management the last 10 years or so, but it does matter. When you don't have the boots on the ground, I remember, remember the Bush fires in Australia a few years ago? Remember talking to my Australian counterpart, and he was just saying, the industry has shrunk so much, we don't have the people out to do the detection. You know, I know in Renfrew County, you've got a lot of people on the ground, so I'm not worried about you, but I think in some of these other communities where you start to walk away, that becomes a risk. I think the Fort Mac fire, you recall, that's, you know, and I don't mind saying this publicly, I think that was some questionable urban development in terms of how, where those houses were on floodplains and how close they were to tree lines. And I chatted with a municipal leader in Grand Prairie in the fall, and he was telling me he had neighborhoods and residents in Grand Prairie who previously didn't want any trees harvested until they saw the fires last year. And now it's like, we need more fire breaks. But as a municipal leader, I know his big problem, too, is that's not cheap. Thinning is not cheap. Fire breaks are not cheap. So what are the programs that can be in place to support those municipalities? Because as municipal leaders, like, you've got very, very big demands and not a lot of money. And I think one of the things that happens in communities like Williams Lake, British Columbia, the fire, I don't know, seven, eight, 10 years ago, the fire in Williams Lake was? Well, the first couple of years after the fire, you know, people are aware of it, then after that, the hockey arena needs to be fixed. You know, priorities start to change the longer you get. So forest management is important, more than ever, I would say. But also, I think there's an important municipal, you know, making sure where are we building? What are the fire breaks? And how can those protect communities? Because it's a bit counterintuitive, but management does matter. We need to be thinning, and we need to be cutting more trees down, actually, as our forests are getting older.
Thank you. And Laurentian Hills, please.
Hi. Great presentation, thank you. Just as information, CNL, three of their most recent new bills have been mass timber. And they're, I think, over 5,000 square meters per building. And they promote it quite openly to everybody that goes there. And in Laurentian Hills, we're looking towards possibly doing that with our new administration building.
Listen, that's excellent. And you have, Government of British Columbia, Government of Quebec have Wood First procurement bills and standards. I, as a leader in the forest sector, I think those are great, but I'm thinking about with your politician hats on, this gets into picking winners over losers. I'm saying, give us a shot. Think of us at the beginning as you would think about cement and steel for construction. All materials fit in different ways, at different times, in different parts of the country. But I just think what I'm seeing, and kudos to Laurentian Hills and kudos to CNL, but I think we need, you need as leaders, I would like you as leaders, to be thinking more about wood upfront. Ask those questions, look at those options upfront, not after the design plans are made, and then you're trying to fit it in.
Thank you. And member from Whitewater, please.
Thanks, Warden. Derek, thanks for the presentation. It really opens up. I did not know this much about forest industry, so I appreciate it. And I'm going to tie it to a presentation that county received, I think at the last meeting, where we have been provided with this double A rating for our biomass and a lot of focus on economic development. What kind of words or advice or influence can you provide with respect to that rating and what we could do next?
Yeah, I'm always very careful. There's a lot of people playing in this biomass space and not knowing the details of it. I'm not quick to chase down some consultant and just believe everything they say. I'm not saying anything bad, because I don't even know who this person is, or I'm just always, anytime I see somebody coming in to sell something, maybe I'm just getting older and jaded, but I'm a little bit careful. I think the starting point for me would be the conversation with the local mills, because at the end of the day, when it comes to biomass, it's basically their chips and the pulp logs that are coming out of harvesting operations. So my first test always would be, because the issue could be different here versus Thunder Bay versus Meadow Lake, Saskatchewan. But I do think biomass, but also, you know, you need a market for it. And I think that's one of the things that's challenged in the industry. You think about, there's a lot of talk about all this innovation, but it needs to be market-ready. I'm hearing a lot of people talk about, the federal government likes to talk a lot about biojet fuel. Well, what a wonderful, it's six times more expensive right now. Who's going to buy that? Who's going to invest in that? So I think anything, I think my number one advice on that would be to talk to local producers, to see what are they thinking, how does this fit into their business model? And then number two, what are the potential markets it could be used for and how market-ready are they? Because there's a lot of great ideas out there, but I think a lot of people are not interested in a science experiment, to be honest, and they're going to want to see, this is where the CFP, this is where Garrison Petawawa combined heat and power, steam, power, wood chips, like downtown Stockholm, like downtown Prince George, there could be a fit there, and you're going to want to make sure that your biomass is sourced sustainably. But also, I know we've got really good certification in the county, too. So those third-party certification systems should count for something. But anyway, maybe, Neil, maybe that's a conversation over a drink sometime, but that would be my top-line answer.
Great advice, because I think that's exactly how the MDF came into being, was that the local producers formed a consortium or a partnership and established it, and then it went to Macklowe and then finally to Roseborough. So yeah, it's great advice. Thank you. Member from Petawawa?
Thank you, Warden, and through you. Thank you, Derek, for coming here today and filling in some of the gaps in our knowledge about the forestry sector. It was good. Just in reference to that slide you have on there, it's kind of concerning that the environmental advocacy groups are so held in such low esteem, I guess, by the people that have taken these opinion polls. So that's somewhat concerning. But just to comment on your very innovative ideas for CFP Petawawa, I worked there for 25 years, and we cursed that boiler annually because it always turned on too late in the winter, so you froze for a couple of weeks. And then they kept it on too long in the spring, and it was very hot in the building. So it's concerning that they are the number six emitter of GHD out of all the 29 bases. So it's pretty neat that you've got this innovative idea for them, but then how do we go out introducing that to them and, you know, getting that conversation started at the garrison? So perhaps I could suggest that sometimes it's good to go to the local source and maybe get a meeting with the garrison commander and then work your way up the chain, and perhaps you could find an advocate there on the garrison itself to get that going. My question is, and maybe you can correct my stats here, does the federal government and the DND, do they have a mandate to purchase 30% of all their energy now, renewable energy?
Yeah, I'd have to go and check the number, but there was a, I can't remember, that it was Secure Something was the name of the foundational document. I can go back and source that for you. But yeah, they've made a number of environmental commitments in that document, but I can get that to you through the clerk.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I see Neil laughing. He was probably in charge of the boiler. And the member from Amisom Bromley?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you through you to Mr. Nyberg, a very informative discussion. I think it could be recognized that you're in the friendly confines when you look about this room and when you consider the motto of the county of Renfrew, let the tree flourish. Certainly, it is top of mind here in the county of Renfrew. A couple of comments. At some point in your conversation, when you were discussing wood chips and perhaps sawdust, bark, et cetera, and you referred to it as waste product, I think that your industry needs to embrace what agriculture has, it's a byproduct. It is not a waste product, it is a byproduct. Corn is used, or grains, or distillers' grains, or miller's grains, and these are livestock feeds. They're not the intent of those whole grains when they are taken into the distillery or to the brewery, but they are a byproduct just the same. And one of your last comments with respect to the cost curve is not lending itself towards production of jet fuel from biomass at this point, but I don't know, I cannot say with certainty how long the ethanol, let's call it the ethanol industry in the United States. But currently, 40% of corn grown in the United States is for energy production, not food production. 60% of the corn grown is for food production. So I think that the R&amp;D and presumably some of the companies that your agency is representing are constantly refining what is available to us, because I think that that is the wave of the future, is innovating not just for the structural applications for the wood product, but also the energy applications. Ultimately, the question that I had, and I know that you're, in speaking to the wildland fires, it was mostly focused on where it has been a threat to humans, to housing, to municipalities, urban settings, et cetera. But last year in particular, a lot of northern Quebec fires were remote, but they had an incredible impact from the smoke that was moving southwards. I also, and I don't know if you would have these numbers at your hands, certainly one of the strengths that Canada has as we are moving towards the Paris Accords and meeting our climate challenge, et cetera, and reducing our emissions, has been the sink, the carbon sink, if you will, of our forests. But I read recently that a substantial amount of carbon was released in the wildfires of last year. As a percentage of our total forest, perhaps it was not an immense amount, but in terms of the release of carbon, there was a substantial amount of that sequestration that had been released. So in speaking to management practices, to planning practices, et cetera, that is certainly applicable in the urban or semi-urban or even perhaps ex-urban environments. But with respect to remote forests, is there really anything that's available to us? Certainly, we were the focus, particularly as large metropolitan centers in the United States were seeing yellow haze that was indicative of the smog of the 70s last year and brought a substantial focus on those fires and the impact from them. But essentially, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think with respect to our remote forests, it is largely a less fair approach with respect to management that we have. I wonder if you can share your thoughts?
Yeah, let me knock off just a couple. On the ag and byproducts, there's a lot of actually collaboration between forestry and agriculture on biomass tax credits and clean fuel regulation, clean electricity regulation. So there'll be healthy competition between the two sectors, but I think a recognized opportunity that it's important for forestry and ag to be working together on a lot of these things. On the jet fuel piece, yeah, listen, VCRs were really expensive at the beginning. My point was more, at this point in time, you're not just going to flip to jet fuel and we're off to the races, but a lot of innovation, and that'll continue to happen as it has on ethanol. Our forests are sources now, and what's scary as well is that a lot of our national parks are sources, too, and that's pest and fire. So that, again, you know, forestry in Canada is about conservation as part of managing. There are set-asides, there are wildlife zones, there are all these things that are going into respect those values. But this notion in Canada to protect 30% land and just put a dome over everything, it's not going to stop pests and fire and wind. So, you know, this is where the management piece, and I can offer through the clerk, a term that you're hearing a lot more in forestry is climate smart forestry. And a lot of that is getting back to indigenous cultural burns. It's getting back to more proactive thinning. The challenge in some of that is, what do you do with some of that low-quality wood? There are not a lot of markets for that, so that market development work needs to be done. You correctly noted the human health impact, which is something that there's a lot more talk about in terms of the smoke and the haze, and that's not only in Canada. But I talked to any of your American friends last summer, they weren't too happy with us, right? Like, that was a big impact. So I'll share through the clerk a climate smart forestry report that we released a few weeks ago, which speaks to some of those solutions about how we can be more proactive. But yes, our biggest carbon problem in Canada is fire.
Just to follow up, and I do have a brother-in-law in New York. He advised me that the notion in New York is that Canada is the number one exporter of wildland smoke, wildland fire smoke and cold fronts. The other element that I do have to commend you on, I was quite astonished, this is page 14 of your slideshow, Opinion of the Forestry Sector, and it does seem even at 40% that that great unknown is a risk, a substantial risk. Nature abhors a vacuum, and it hates a vacuum of information as well, and those information vacuums will get filled by someone else if you're not doing it. However, where I commend you is, just in five years, you've reduced it, you and all of your colleagues have reduced it from almost 60% in 2020 to 40% in 2024. That is to be commended, that is a substantial gain.
Yeah, I'd say there's a website, forestryforthefuture.ca, which is our main anchor site to share some of the facts. And, you know, and I'm challenged, and listen, we in the industry, when you're running websites like that, are subject to very strict rules around what you say. There are, you know, we need to be very careful about what we're presenting. That means sticking to the facts and telling people stories, and that's a big part of that website. The other thing I think I'll say is, in addition to the proactive work the industry and workers are doing more across Canada, I'd also say the economic shift has probably helped the numbers in this regard. In that, I would say, and you're seeing that, I think, in the national polling around affordability and inflation and concern about making ends meet, which I know all of you in your communities are grappling with in terms of getting tax dollars in and those kinds of things. I have seen a market shift, I'd say, in the last year around, people are still concerned about the environment very much, but people are very worried about affordability issues and jobs. Probably five years ago, I had a hard time holding an audience talking about economic growth and jobs. Now it's all people want to talk about, and I think that's a good thing, but let's not have the baby go out with the bathwater. Good environmental stewardship and climate action continues to need to be part of that conversation. So anyway, I think that's some of the context beyond just the good work of the sector and its people. I do think that the landscape has shifted on us over the past four or five years as well.
And supplementary?
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. And this actually was prompted by Mr. Nyberg's previous response. So this council has heard me at numerous times in this room. Oftentimes, immigration is seen as a pejorative, that our numbers are too high, et cetera. And one of my pushbacks is within the long-term care sector as well. Mr. Blackmore, being the director of long-term care for the county of Renfrew at the Matter and the Lodge. In Ontario, we're short 51,000 PSWs and nurses. That's a small section of the health sector in one province. I'm kind of curious that you had opened the door to the discussion of jobs and economic engine, et cetera. What is the experience in the forestry sector? And I mean right across the full sector, right from primary production in the forest right through to ultimately consumer goods. What is the challenge within the human resource side? Are they wanting for employees, for staff? Is that a challenge?
Yeah, truck drivers, contractors, stationary engineers, you name it. I think you talk to any sector, it's much the same. I think that would be echoed by a lot of the mills in the area. I'm also worried, I'm even more worried, like I said, about the future of the industry and not only its ability to deliver tax dollars and, you know, to the tax base, but also, like, you know, one of the biggest issues in Fort Nelson after the mill closed when I was up there, you can't have a baby at that hospital. You've got to go to Fort St. John, and heaven forbid you have a complicated pregnancy that's four hours away. Then you're in Vancouver for a month. That's not going to be cheap. So this is the other part, I, you know, I think we're a little bit, we're not in that territory, because we're not a one-horse town here in terms of industry, but there is some, there is some very economic and social... there is some very economic and social risk that comes with not maintaining a very vibrant industry. And I know we're very grateful for CNL and Garrison Petawawa here. Thank God for that. But but this industry is a pretty important core. And if we, if we don't have those jobs, if it's the, you know, the husband or the wife is working at the hospital or is teaching at the school, that's what we've seen in some of these communities. Not to mention, mill closes, my house is now worth forty percent less. That's not pretty either. Strain on the marriage, tough to send the kids to school, can't afford to pay for hockey registration. So so there's the direct labor stuff, but I'm also thinking long game here, like what can we do? Again, no, no good money after bad, no black hole. Let's not feed dinosaurs, but let's do the due diligence, see what what stuff can we really ramp up by way of infrastructure and innovation and provide a provide a multi-generational opportunity for for people in the county?
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none. Derek, thank you very much. It's always a pleasure and always learn something new every time, every time I hear you speak. And always encouraged by you representing our community everywhere you go. I follow you on X, which used to be Twitter, and you're always mentioning our county or endorsing anything that the county does. So again, thank you for for your ambassadorship as well.
Yeah, and don't read my Senators and Blue Jays X tweets because they're not.
No, they're not. With that, we'll move to correspondence. And Mr. Kelly, please.
Thank you, Warden. So this is a bit of a departure, as these items are in the hands of council, so they're brought back to council for your consideration as opposed to going directly back to committee. So item A, item number one, is a letter back to the warden, the warden council from the Renfrew County District Health Unit, dated April 12. So if you recall, council had imparted direction to the warden and to deliver a letter to the health unit to discuss, to have a discussion at least, on possible future considerations with a mind of, I'll use the word loosely for merger opportunities and or, I guess, discussions on how the health units will will face a future where the provinces ask for voluntary merger conversations to occur. So in front of you is a is a letter back from Chair Joanne King, who is the the chair again of the Board of Health, who is suggesting in her letter quite directly that the health unit is not interested in these conversations, and and we thank her for that correspondence. I can stop and have you address each letter, Warden, or do you want me to read through them all and then go back through? It's up to you.
Go ahead through and we'll circle back.
Fair enough. Thank you. Item B is is an item now, because we haven't updated our procedural by law or otherwise, with the Warden's Caucus, for those who who know I'm the Secretary Treasurer, your warden is the chair, it has been asked that we communicate efforts that are ongoing in the Warden's Caucus more than just as as the warden has to talk about within a paragraph in his Warden's Address. So we are communicating this to you regularly on a monthly basis, the annual or the monthly newsletter. In the future, I see a place where this would also live amongst the reports that are seen at the end of your agendas, Aroma, FCM, AMO, and and others. But again, the procedural bylaw does not currently allow, so it has found its place here in correspondence today. And item C was a letter received through Councilor Dan Lynch from the Town of Ironpryor. I don't have any more information than is currently here, but it would seem that the Town of Ironpryor is soliciting support from all members of council and the County of Renfrew for seeking a proposal to host the IIHF World Junior Championship event in the Town of Ironpryor. So these are before you for correspondence, Warden.
Thank you. We'll go back to item A, and I see the member from Bonchar Valley.
Thank you, Warden. I'm going to speak on behalf, I think, of all four of us that sit on the board that sit here at county. This is not at all what the Board of the Health Unit agreed to. We voted on a potential merger with North Bay Perry Sound Health Unit, and it was defeated. And the warden brought forward the idea that we wouldn't, we could in fact share services, collaborate, et cetera. It was unanimously agreed on that this was something that the Board wanted to look into staff to staff with the County of Renfrew. In reading this on Friday, when Gwen very kindly sent out our package, I assumed, as I know one, at least one of my colleagues did, that this letter would come to the Board of Health yesterday. It did not. And I'm, quite frankly, I'm a bit embarrassed and very confused as to why this was the response to the warden's letter, because he sits on the board and he knew exactly what the Board had asked of the chair. In fact, there is a paragraph in this, and I will ask for some backup from my colleagues on the board, about staff and staff time, et cetera. And in fact, the way I heard it was that staff didn't want to go down another path of a health unit to health unit merger. In fact, it had taken up a lot of oxygen in the room, and they seemed to be relieved that that idea was over and that they could work locally with the County of Renfrew staff. Knowing our senior leadership team here, knowing our staff at the County of Renfrew, I think that this would have been a very easy meeting to have, where there might have been some concessions, there might have been some, no, we actually can't take that on. But I want everybody in this room and online to know that this is not at all what the Board of Health agreed to. And I am, as you can see, I'm extremely displeased with this letter as the response to the warden's outreach to the Board of Health. Thank you.
Thank you. Member from North Algonquin, please.
Thank you very much, Warden. And just to support what my colleague has said, I agree with everything she has said. This letter that was sent back to the warden and this council was never endorsed by the Board of Health and was was not, was sent as the Board of Health, as a chair from the Board of Health, and the rest of the members of the board were unaware that this was being sent. So it is a bit of a surprise. And especially having attended the Mesa gathering last week, and the importance that was emphasized there on collaboration, on the need to work more closely together, and on on the county, on the county's initiatives to date, working with paramedic services, with the Renfrew County Board of Health, with mental health services, with addiction services, those processes are already in place. And then to have a letter like this suggesting that the Board of Health isn't interested in exploring possible shared services any further is, is, as my colleague said, it is certainly disappointing.
Thank you. Any member from Amisom Bromley?
It was not my intent if 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 Counselor Nicholson, as the fourth member, wished to to comment. Oh, okay. So of course, the Board of Health is its own entity, and when, which is distinct from the County of Renfrew. The documents that we have currently, they have built upon extensive work that was done, I think, in perhaps 2020, maybe a year before that, there were foundational documents. At that time, that was shared with the Board of Health. The response from the Board of Health at that time was that they were appreciative of us providing them the position paper of the the County of Renfrew, but wanted it made clear that it was not endorsed by the Board of Health at the time. And we have done so throughout any of the conversations we were having. For those who were on councils or may have been aware of it at the time, and I cannot remember what the the kind of itinerant group that was led by Mr. Jim Pine, and it was reviewing both public health and the paramedic services, and that was became somewhat abortive upon the pandemic visiting us in March of 2020. So having said that, they are their own entity. My view on this letter, particularly as Counselor Brosa suggested, that apparently, if I'm to understand correctly, this is the position of the Chair of the Board of Health, but it is not necessarily the position of the Board of Health, given that there has been no discussion at the Board with respect to a response. And my disappointment would be in essentially closing the door to a discussion. I recognize the challenge that Ms. King is presenting here in that a lot of staff time had been devoted towards this endeavor that was visited upon public health, just following, actually, the AMO conference in London in August of last year. And I understand that there was a very dedicated and committed engagement. Yeah, I am uncertain. I understand that a lot of resources were allocated to that, but it seems in direct contrast to have a fairly summary dismissal of any engagement with the County of Renfrew. Secondarily, I would suggest that the, you know, with four members of county council that are members of the Board of Health, there is a fairly, a fair knowledge set that is available to the Board of Health. In reading this from Ms. King, it seems to betray a kind of a thin grasp, I would suggest, of what the county does. You know, just if I might, given the the last paragraph on page sixty of the PDF, wherein Ms. King states, given public health's distinct software and technology requirements, financial, and reporting context and other unique factors which are firmly established and require new systems to be developed, additionally, a merger with municipal entity would not strengthen epidemiology, public health communications, or health promotion support. I have been on record numerous times with Mr. Burke and his predecessor, Mr. Foss, of how incredibly complex both the financial structure and reporting structures are of the County of Renfrew when we take in long-term care, when we take in Ontario Disability Support, Ontario Works, housing, childcare, the paramedic service. I can hardly think that there is a more complex organization, both to account for financially and the myriad reporting requirements, MSA's and LSA's and whatever other SAA's that we may be exposed to here. The expertise here, I think, is is substantial. There is also, on the next page, the second paragraph, that is page sixty-one, the second paragraph, second sentence, the Ministry of Health's voluntary merger initiative will only fund mergers between public health units, not mergers of public health units with municipalities, so there's no funding available to support this type of merger. I don't know that that is accurate. Perhaps Ms. King knows that definitively, but I have not seen any information to that extent. Moving down two paragraphs, with respect to Health Protection and Promotion Act and Regulation 559, likely presents both a legal and logistical barrier to a merger between RCDHU and the County of Renfrew. Challenge, barrier is overstating. The model that has been promulgated in the position paper of the County of Renfrew is quite clear. It would emulate essentially the single-tier and regional boards of health that currently exist. The model is there. This is not inventing a new model. And I would think that even a merger in within health units is probably would provide a substantial challenge in just figuring out your governance structures moving forward that would not be any less complex or more complex than what we would be discussing herein. And ultimately, then, a merger would require the county to support areas that extend beyond the county's geographic boundaries. We do that. The paramedic service is doing that currently. The paramedic service provides emergency response, presumably all of the other services as well, with the City of Pembroke and the County of Renfrew, and the township of South Algonquin, and in fact, even to the unorganized territories, there's Algonquin Park to some extent. All of the community services, long-term care, we are also partners with the City of Pembroke on currently. South Algonquin, as my understanding, does not participate in our our community services programs or in our long-term care, that they would be part of the the District of Nipissing Service Board, I believe. But the model already exists there. So I'm only saying all of these things, not with an intent towards trying to persuade Ms. King or the Board of Health for that matter, that this would be an appropriate move forward. But I think also in in conjunction with Counselor Brosa's comments about the numerous joint efforts, beginning with VTAC, with the with the vaccination program that was rolled out through the entirety of COVID, with Mesa, the the visit, one of the last things that Ms. Lapine did in her in her position as Director of Community Services, was to make a presentation to the Board of Health. The overlap from a health equity lens almost describes the Venn diagram almost describes a complete circle in terms of the services and the populations and the demographics meant to 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 be supported. So ultimately, Mr. Warden, my disappointment is not that we're not there. My disappointment is that the the Chair of the Board of Health is disinclined, as I understand it right now, on her own, to even engage in any sort of discussion or consideration of this. And I think that is short-sighted in in the challenge, just as as Counselor Nicholson had suggested, as I would remind council, the province has been quite clear that the one percent is a hard number of increase on an annualized basis, but that there may be more eligibility for funding for those public health units that did in fact engage in a merger. And I will remind council once again that it is the County of Renfrew, the City of Pembroke, and the township of South Algonquin that will be picking up anything in excess of a one percent increase. And I will with absolute certainty tell you, in 2025, as in 2024, it shall not be a one percent increase that the Board of Health shall be seeking.
Thank you. Any further comments?
So I think my exuberance may have been a little off-putting. I wrote a very promising note and included the our document, Renfrew County District Health Unit and the County of Renfrew collaboration. So I included that with the letter, as I felt that it's always good to put your cards on the table. And so was giving, you know, hopefully, an informed, them an opportunity for an informed outlook on what was the potential was. So I, you know, I think one of the first things I have to do is when I do speak with Ms. King or in the responding letters, I will apologize for my exuberance and sharing too much information. You know, it's a little disappointing, and I think, but it's fairly consistent with with Renfrew County as a as a as a geographic entity. Silos build up, the frontline staff work really well together, and it takes management a while to catch up. And I, you know, I think we're in, we may be in that stage of relationship building where, you know, the both parties will have to be reminded of all the successes and all the all the interconnectedness of the system right now, where we're functioning as partners side by side, and then to start to have a conversation about about what the future holds. You know, I'm going to suggest as delicately as I can that the the funding partners may not be as inclined or as generous in the future, because we will too be facing economic tightness in the next little while. And I would also suggest that the province may want to take a look at at islands that haven't joined up. And so there are some things that start having a conversation about. And probably most important will be the reminder of the 2019 motion that was passed by the Board at the time, which was followed up or or supported by a memo which outlined a path forward, and it talked about integration. And it's called the Yakubusky. about integration, and it's called the Yakubuski Memo, by great irony, because we were using it to go and to go and brief Mr. Yakubuski about some of the plans, which involved a closer relationship with Ottawa Public Health. I'm aware of the contents, because I was the one that wrote it, and I was also the one that wrote the letter for the Chair of the day. So, you know, there has been no motion to rescind that, so that motion essentially remains a significant document. And then also, I don't have the luxury of ignoring a motion of counsel. And the motion that was placed before you was exactly the same as the motion that was placed in front of the Board of Health to start the discussion. So it'll take a little while, but we'll get, we'll go back at it. But we thought it was important to to share this information, and if anybody in the formation of the letter that we'll be sending back has any any comments that aren't incendiary or inflammatory, inflammatory, please send them forward, or any suggestions on how to proceed, gratefully accepted. So with that, if there's no further comments, we'll move along. The, you'll notice the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus Newsletter, any comments, questions? So it's new for us. You know, part of it is, I think, to reduce the the burden, and similar to what's happened with our our newsletter that goes out after every, or the council summary, that serves as the foundation for your report to to your community, and I think, and that's what we're trying to replicate with this as well. So everybody gets consistent information and not disjointed and maybe out of sync. And next is the letter from the Town of Armpryor, and the member from Armpryor Police.
Thank you, Warden. Just to inform counsel that in the past, we've held the World Broom Ball Championships, the Tallas Cup, and most recently, as I mentioned, the Ontario Winter Games. The most important thing for us is we have two rinks, which helps out immensely when you're going to have any hockey tournaments. That's just the general information. Thank you, Warren.
Okay. Thank you very much. Pardon me? Sorry, I missed that. Yes, we do, two beautiful rinks. Thank you. If there's no further relevant comments, then we'll move on. And with that, we'll move to the Finance and Admin Committee Chair, please.
Thank you, Warden. I know, see, my colleague here just said you get to go first. To the council of the Corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of County Council, we, your Finance and Administration Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Under information item number one, recruitment update for the Director of Corporate Services position. You can see that the recruiting group did not choose a director, but instead, we will be moving forward for the short term, the way we've been operating now, where our department managers report to our CIO, and we will report back at a later date. Number two is our new agenda management system, and there is background for you there. Number three is our council remuneration as at March 31, 2024. Number four is the Treasurers' Report as at March 31, 2024. Under number five, you can see the 15 new and returning summer students across the various departments. Under number six, employee recognition, and there is a bulletin announcing the grand prize winner and all the nominees for the county's employee recognition program for the 2023 year, and stay tuned for the Q1 2024 award winners. Under resolutions, Resolution Number FAC, I think that should be CC, 24-05-57, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee. The County Councils support the resolution from Hastings County regarding unsustainable infrastructure funding for small municipalities. And there is background provided under Appendix 4. Number eight, Resolution Number FAC-C 24-05-58. The County Council nominates County Councilor Peter Emo for the position of Rural Caucus Director on the AMO Board of Directors, with the added responsibility of serving on the Roma Board of Directors for the 2024-2026 term, and the background is there with a whole bunch of initializations. Under number nine, Resolution Number FAC-C 24-05-59, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee. The County Council, after a review of the current state of corporate services, have staff submit delegation requests at the upcoming Association of Municipalities of Ontario Conference. They're consistent with the 2023-2026 County of Renfrew Strategic Plan, current initiatives that require further advocacy, and previous delegations that address funding shortfalls. And there is background there. Number 10, Resolution Number FAC-C 24-05-63, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee. The County Council approved the funds, that funds up to $40,000 be taken from the 2024 precision provision for unallocated funds to initiate the process of implementing central scheduling for the County of Renfrew. And there's quite a bit of background there, and very interesting. Under bylaws, number 11, Resolution Number FAC-C 24-05-61, moved by myself as Chair, seconded by committee. The County Council received the Delegation of Authority bylaw for consideration, and again, there is background there. Under number 12, Resolution Number FAC-C 24-05-65, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee. The County Council approved the following amended corporate policies. Policy A03: Recruitment. Policy A04: Ontario Human Rights Code Violation. Policy A07: Criminal Record Check for Perspective Employees. Policy A09: Misconduct in the Workplace. Policy A10: Staffing. Policy A15: Code of Ethical Conduct. Policy A19: Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. Policy B03: Establishment of New Positions. Policy B10: Acting Pay. Policy E04: Vacation. Policy E05: Bereavement. Policy H02: Discipline and Dismissal. Policy J01: Service Awards Program. Policy J05: Employees Recognition Program. And the County Council adopted a bylaw to amend bylaw 63-03, being a bylaw to establish human resources, corporate policies, and procedures for the County of Renfrew, and there is background there, including just some housekeeping items, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and committee members, Bros, Dawn, Caster, Dunhu, Emo, Jardini, Yon, and Mayville. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns from members of council? On item number one? Item two? Item three? Item four? Item number five? Item six? Item seven? Item number eight? Item nine? Item 10? Item 11? The report is a whole. And the member from Petawawa, please.
Thank you, Warden. I just wanted to ask a question about item 12. Is that okay?
Please.
Okay. And I hope I'm not being nitpicky here, but anytime that we're making amendments or changes to a whole bunch of different policies, is there the chance that when it's presented to us, we could have what has been taken out shown with lines, so we know what's been deleted, what's been added, and if something has been replaced with something else, have it highlighted in some fashion? Just so we know what's been amended, what's been taken out? I hope I'm not being too nitpicky. Thanks.
No, Mr. Kelly, please.
Through you, Warden. So that's usually received at the committee level, and what the committee has seen is those replacements, and then committee has agreed to those, and then it's forwarded here for your final consideration. So the granular levels of that do not come to County Council and haven't, because committee is recommending those changes to you. Those packages get circulated to you for your consideration, should you have any questions on that, like all other reports, but I will take direction.
Anything further? Motion, please.
So moved, Mr. Warden.
You've heard the reports, the question. Any further comments? All those in favor? Opposed? None, it's carried. Thank you, counsel, and thank you for your endorsement of my running for the AMO, I'd almost said AMO Chair, but no, the AMO position. I've really enjoyed it, and, you know, I hope I hope to continue to be able to be of some value to AMO and Roma, so thank you very much for the opportunity. Okay. And so with that, we'll move to item B, which is Community Services Committee, please.
Thank you, Warden. To the council of the Corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of County Council, we, your Community Services Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Information item one is the Renfrew County District Drug Strategy Steering Committee. First meeting was held on April 25 at the Pembroke Fire Hall. Membership consists of leaders of organizations representing the pillars of substance use, provincial treatment, harm reduction, and community safety. Item number two is the National Housing Strategy funding allocations in response to concerns regarding interruptions in National Housing Strategy funding allocations from the federal and provincial levels of government. Item number three is information on the Canadian Dental Care Plan, and there is information attached as Appendix 2. Excuse me. Item four is the Annual Childcare and Early Years Professional Learning Day, once again, on May 10. The Childcare and Early Years Division hosted the Annual Professional Professional Learning Day, known as May Day, very, very popular event. All of the centers are closed down for this one-day professional development. 450 participants at the Petawawa Civic Centre, very well, very good response on that. Item number five are updates to Ontario's Childcare Workforce Strategy and the Canada-wide early learning and childcare system. So updates have been provided in the areas listed there. And there is a table there that shows the incremental allocations. Item number six, Memorandum of Understanding with Community Living Upper Ottawa Valley. So the Renfrew County Housing Corporation and the community living upper Ottawa Valley aim to cultivate an environment where residents can live with dignity, fostering a neighborhood where they have opportunities to participate and integrate into the community. So the Community Living Upper Ottawa Valley has agreed to a donation of $200,000 to Renfrew County Housing Corporation, exchanged for two affordable housing units to be designated for a 15-year term. A very good partnership here. Item number seven is the 10-Year Housing and Homelessness Plan. So Renfrew County Housing Corporation has engaged org code consulting to develop our 10-year housing and homelessness plan. It's part of a broader Mesa project with goals and strategies aligning with both Mesa and County of Renfrew Strategic Plan. The next steps are listed there, phased up to Phase 5 and 6, and the completion of this plan is anticipated by September 2024. Item eight is the health clinics at community housing buildings, and community paramedics and community housing staff held their first clinic, which was scheduled on the 7th. Item number nine, new construction, addition of rent guarantee incoming units. Renfrew County Housing Corporation's construction projects in Pembroke are on their final stages, 202 CECL, which as we know is a duplex with two bedrooms nearing completion, and while the Lee Douglas Street has four single-bedroom units and four two-bedroom units. Expect occupancy permits before the end of this month. And on that, we had the pleasure of the ribbon-cutting ceremony with Associate Minister of Municipal Affairs, and also with our local MPP. Resolution number 10, Renfrew County Housing Summit, Resolution Number CS-CC 24-05-26, moved by myself, seconded by committee. The County Council approved the Housing Summit Report as presented, along with the 12 key recommendations. The background is there for your information, as well as all the recommendations listed. Item number 11 is City of Pembroke Rehab Facility Funding, Resolution Number CS-CS-CC-24-05-27, moved by myself as Chair, seconded by committee. The County Council supports the resolution from the Corporation of the City of Pembroke Council to establish a mental health, drug addiction treatment, and residential rehabilitation facility serving the County of Renfrew. Background is there as well. Bylaw number 12, Memorandum of Understanding with the Early Development Instrument Cycle 6 Resolution Number CS-CC-24-05-28, moved by myself as Chair, seconded by committee. The County Council adopt a bylaw to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Ministry of Education concerning the release of information collected using the Early Development Instrument Cycle 6, and the background is there. Item 13, Ontario Transfer Payment Agreement, Resolution Number CS-CC-24-05-29, moved by Chair, seconded by committee. The County Council adopt a bylaw to amend bylaw 17-13, being a bylaw to execute the Ontario Transfer Payment Agreement with the Ministry of Education for the 2023-2027 Childcare Early On and Canada-wide Early Learning and Childcare Service Agreement to accept a revised 2024 Childcare Early On and CWOP Transfer Payment Agreement with the Minister of Education. The background is there, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and committee members, Emo, Grills, Mayville, Nicholson, and Service.
Thank you, Chair. And with that, questions, comments, concerns from members of council on item number one? Item two? And Ms. Patrick, can you just give us a real quick good news update, if you don't mind?
Absolutely, Warden. I'm on, and through you to council. So, sorry, I just lost my place. This is with respect to the National Housing Strategy. Yeah, so very pleased to indicate that the provincial and federal governments put out a joint media release to indicate that they have come to a new agreement for Ontario with respect to funding through the National Housing Strategy. So we do not have any details coming to us as a service manager yet in terms of the specifics, but they have indicated that an agreement has been reached, and as part of that agreement, they will be certainly focusing on new projects in the area, and will have some very specific measurement tools that, as the service manager, we will need to adhere to in terms of some of the new building projects that will be able to be used with the money. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, that came out yesterday morning, I think about 10:45 or something. So with that, item number three? Item number four? Item five? Item six? Item seven? Item number eight? Item number nine? Item 10? Member from, Mr. Bromley, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. I commend all those involved in organizing, the participants, and I think it's an outstanding summary report of the initiative. I think that this kind of concentrated session is probably the way to very quickly break through barriers and overcome hurdles, et cetera. Was quite interested, actually, in a lot of the survey results as well. The only, and I want to be very careful, this is not a critique, just in reading this, particularly as as I chair the Health Committee, I would suggest that there might be a place for including in in the overall report of this, the seniors' housing strategy, I think, is going to be a fairly integral part of this as well, and we have been hearing, uncomfortably, we've been hearing that the seniors' demographic is also is also represented in the homeless, and I think that that is going to be an ongoing challenge. I think even the presentation this morning on the SWLT, Single Women Living Together, I think is also underscoring some of the financial challenges that are confronting not just seniors, but even in this instance, seniors who are identified as being 55-plus. But I just think that that is a component when we are talking about homeless, that we are seeing a rising challenge within the seniors' demographic as well. And again, want to be very careful. I think this is slightly above picking nits, but well below a substantive critique. I think that this is outstanding day, and I think that it is an outstanding report. Thank you.
Thank you. And what we can do is have Mr. Davis, Ms. Patrick, and Mr. Kelly take a look at that suggestion. Good news is that Minister Thompson, we mentioned this in our session with her on Monday, and she is anxiously awaiting the recommendations in the report itself because she thought it was a good foundational document for her as she tried to get a sense of the needs of rural Ontario. So we'll certainly forward that along to her as soon as we get it wrapped up. Any further comments? And just to echo the comments of the member, I was very proud of the summit. It brought together a real collection of individuals, and we've had some good conversations with some of the participants. As late as yesterday afternoon, we were chatting with someone. And it certainly cemented in the idea that we have to be nimble and get things done on a timely and quick fashion. And that there are a number of willing partners as well. And so I think that's the primary message, but I think part of that confidence, you know, when you show up at something and it's not well-run, and the coffee's cold, and the floor's dirty, it leaves you with a bad or slightly negative impression. So it's nice, you know, I think the comfort and the smooth delivery and the information that flowed, I think, went a long way to leaving a good impression and starting the relationship. So thank you very much to everybody that worked on it. It was a, I was very proud to be there, actually, so thank you. With that, we'll move to item number 11. And the member from Deep River.
Thank you, Warden. I just wanted to have some clarification or confirmation that the resolution itself in isolation is not in isolation based on the background and the resolution and letter that was provided by the City of Pembroke, that this would happen based on advocacy to the province for funding on this, and that the resolution isn't in isolation, that we're just creating this facility and ultimately financing it ourselves.
Having listened to the debate and having been approached five minutes before the resolution went to the city, before it went to council, and so we made the slight change and clarification that it would be serving the County of Renfrew, meaning it could be located in Ottawa, close to the border, or it could be located in Llaner County, because we aren't sure of the numbers and the level of need. Also knowing that at the time, Dr. Morganstern was going to strike up the opioids and substance abuse task force. And so those are the, so it would be the product, I think, or definitely be the use, there'd definitely be sound numbers used, and it wouldn't be badged and financed by the County of Renfrew. Yeah, so just to reassure you, we're not taking on something and hoping that we can just fund it internally. Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to number 12, the Memorandum of Understanding. And the member from North Agon to Wilberforce, please.
Thank you, Warden. Pleased to see this. This was also, I don't know how closely it ties, but I know there's some overlap between the Renfrew County Health Unit and what this Memorandum of Understanding speaks to, especially when it comes to early childhood development from the physical health part. We all know food security is becoming a major challenge as the inflation prices for food has risen significantly. And at the Health Unit, the concern is, you know, the cost of formula, which has more than doubled in a lot of cases, which affects the development of the child and their educational outcomes. So again, pleased to see that there's this collaboration and overlap. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 13. The report as a whole. The member from Whitewater.
Thanks, Warden. I actually wanted to come back and just make some comments to deal with our 10-year housing and homelessness plan, if that's appropriate. Item number seven.
Item number seven? Food's not here.
I just wanted to highlight, I'm eagerly anticipating this report that's going to be done by our consultant. What we heard yesterday at the Eastern Ontario Housing Summit was some more detailed information about the demographics of who is physically moving to our areas, what age groups, what types of housing, you know, the impact of seniors. I think that'll be enlightening, and I would encourage our consultant to make sure that they include that kind of detail so that we can see what exactly the demand is going to be. Is it for single, is the market calling for single units or three-bedroom units, those kinds of things? And I'm hoping that that consultant includes that kind of detail, as we saw yesterday at the summit. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so there was a lot of great information, and I'm trying to access those slides from Dr. Moffett, but also the economist from Scotiabank. I found him to be probably the non-economist economist because he spoke very plain language and didn't pull any punches, and normally they're not that forthright, so I was very impressed with him yesterday. So we'll have to grab, as soon as we get that information, we'll try and get it out to you. But there was some very valuable information, you're right, thank you very much. So with that, the report as a whole, and a mover, please.
So moved.
So counsel, you've heard the report, you've heard the comments and the questions. Anything else? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? None, it's carried, thank you, counsel. And I see everybody craning their neck. Did it not come in yet? Okay, so we'll. Oh, okay, we can take a wash for a break, and yes, please do. Hang around for lunch. Yeah.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your patience. And with that, we'll move to the Health Committee, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. By the way, we are six minutes past when we're so well, I've been sitting here six minutes waiting to provide my report. To the council of the corporation of the county of Renfrew, members of county council, we here health committee wish to report and recommend as follows information items beginning with number one. Mesa engagement and anti stigma activities. And you can see the engagement in the community. This was essentially what Mesa has been stood up for to be engaging out into the community, and we are seeing substantial uptake. Also of note, there was the Mesa gathering, as you had noted, Mr. Warden, in your warden's comments on the 22nd of May. And I think similar to the housing summit, I think that that was an exceptional endeavor to break through the challenge, break through the noise and get to the signal. The signal to noise ratio that day. That was phenomenal, and I think good things are going to come from that. Item number two is with respect to the treat and refer model of care approval and wherein the minister has provided. Both the treat and refer and treat and discharge in the the hospital program for the paramedics to have the appropriate response that each of the responses does not require. Transportation to an emergency room. So very pleased at that. Item three again, as you had noted in your warden's address. The much thank you and gratitude both to the emergency responders that were essentially being recognized. But also to the incredible grace of Mr. Blackstein that is repeatedly on display right across our community. In in offering up the change in name of this roadway in the city of Pembroke. Item number four is Ministry of Long Term Care Funding and the Case Mix Index and in the messaging substantial change and. This is akin to the sighting of a unicorn. I believe in the entire time that I have been sitting in this room, I do not think we have been pleasantly surprised at the CMI funding. It it has without fail been been under what was anticipated and at best. I think we might have seen an increase at one home that was offset or more than offset by a decrease in the other. In this instance, we are seeing substantial increase in the funding. Across both homes and do keep in mind that the numbers that you are seeing on the right hand side, they are through the provincial fiscal year. So three quarters of them will be available. In 2024 and one quarter in the first quarter, our first quarter of 2025. It should be noted that on various programming that was brought forward in both April and in May. At Health Committee ultimately since the adoption of the budget in January, the long term care cumulatively or in aggregate. since the adoption of the budget in January, the long-term care cumulatively or in aggregate has received something in the order of $2.7 million, more than had initially been budgeted. Item five is the long-term care home accommodation charges. And this is, it is important for council to understand that these are considered tenancies as well, and the rates are subject to the provincial standards. The, Mr. Burke advised at the Health Committee meeting that in fact, this is a neutral with respect to the county funding, county and city funding of the two long-term care homes, because as the resident rate increases, the grant provided by the province decreases as well. Item number six, enormously pleased that the butterfly, the transition to the butterfly model is continuing apace. And this is accreditation of outstanding designation for Miramichi Lodge. And I know that there is the, I think a video is anticipated by Mr. Blackmore coming forward to Health Committee in June. So for those not on Health Committee, you'll certainly be able to, if that in fact comes to fruition, I do see somewhat of a grimace from Mr. Blackmore, so that may not be the case. But when it does, it will be available on the YouTube recording. Item number seven is the Ontario Health Team, and appendix three is the letter and funding agreement and schedules. This is, there's a, I think it says a bylaw is coming forward. This, of course, is recognizing that the County of Renfrew continues to essentially be the banker, if you will, for the Ontario Health Team. Moving in on then, Mr. Warden, to bylaws. Contact, contract renewal for 211 Ontario. Resolution number H-CC-24-05-72, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that county council adopt a bylaw authorizing the warden and CAO deputy clerk to execute a memorandum of understanding between Ontario 211 Services, O211S, and the County of Renfrew to provide 211 contact center, the telephony system, access and support the Renfrew County Virtual Triage and Assessment Center team, and the background, Mr. Warden, is attached. Item nine is the Renfrew County Virtual Triage and Assessment Center. It is resolution number H-CC-24-05-73. Once again, moved by myself, seconded by a committee, that county council adopt a bylaw authorizing the warden and CAO deputy clerk to sign the lease agreement between the County of Renfrew and Care for Health and Community Services. And once again, the background is attached. I would remind Health Committee that you just this morning received an addendum, which is item number 10 under bylaws. There was a special meeting of the Health Committee earlier this morning, pre-county council coming to order. Item number 10 is the 2024-25 Level of Care Funding Increases for Long-Term Care Homes, and this is one of those other envelopes that I had discussed earlier. Resolution number H-CC-24-05-80, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that county council adopt a bylaw authorizing the warden and CAO deputy clerk to execute an agreement with the Ministry of Long-Term Care for the 2024-25 Level of Care Funding Increases to Long-Term Care Homes effective April 1st, 2024. Once again, Mr. Warden, the background is attached. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as chair, along with committee members, Emo Grills, Jan Murphy, Nicholson, Weir, and Wilmer.
Thank you. Comments, questions, concerns from members of council on item number one? Item number two? Item three? Item four? Item number five? Item number six? Item seven? A member from North Agona, Wilberforce, please.
Thank you, Warden. Just in regards to the Ontario Health Teams, and we did have a presentation from, at the health unit meeting yesterday, and that's the, is that the Four Rivers?
Yes.
There seems to be a lot of money being poured into the administration of the Ontario Health Teams, but do we know going forward, what kind of a report card that we're going to receive on the services they provide, and any indication on the services improving some of the access to better care for residents to remain at home, or find a place to return to home with the proper supports that they need, knowing that there's such a shortage of nurses and PSWs?
Mr. Kelly, please.
Thank you, Warden, and through you, Councilor Bros. So timely, I'm just responding to Ms. Jemawatt. They are the OVOHT, the Ottawa Valley Ontario Health Team, so the Ontario Health Team that does not include Arm Prior, that's Four Rivers. They are making a presentation or delegation to the Health Committee in June, on June the 12th. So the back and forth is they will be here to talk about strategic priorities, the collaborative efforts, what's the area of focus, and what projects they will be working on. Committee or council may recall, we are the transfer payment agreement holder for the OVOHT, so and support staff are actually County of Renfrew staff. So between myself, Mr. Blackmore, Mr. Nolan, Mr. Grenier, Mr. Minister and Mrs., all sit on a committee of some type with the OVOHT. So we're engaged with them. But I think this June 12th meeting, and feel free to, feel free to come, because they couldn't make a council meeting, would be an opportunity for questions like that if they're not presented properly, or pass them on to the chair if you have certain questions, I'm sure.
Hey, thank you. And a member from MS Bromley.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Just to perhaps extend from Mr. Kelly's comments, of course, all of, there are virtual links to all of the committee meetings, all of the council meetings for the County of Renfrew. So even if you're not able to attend in person at that meeting, do not hesitate to tune in virtually. And I will certainly try and recognize anyone that may have questions. I think that it is, that's an important question that Councilor Bros. has raised. The Ontario Health Teams have supplanted the former local health integration networks, and here it was the Champlain Lynn. And the Champlain Lynn annually had their reports, which were loaded up with the KPIs, key performance indicators, length of time waiting for home care, et cetera, those sorts of performance metrics. And I don't believe that we've seen those from the Ontario Health Team, and I think that that is a reasonable expectation moving forward. But that will certainly be a question or comment at the committee meeting in June.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions on item number seven? Moving to item eight? Item nine? And item 10. Report as a whole? Seeing none? Chair, please, a motion?
So moved, Mr. Warden.
You've heard the report, the questions, and the explanations. Anything further? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you very much, council. Council. And we'll move to operations, please.
Thank you, Warden. Members of county council, we here Operations Committee wish to report and recommend as follows. Information items. Number one, the monthly project status report. Item number two, the capital program variance report, attached as appendix two. Monthly construction updated, as reported previously. The county is now using ZenCity to keep updated on the progress of projects, along with the county's website, social media accounts, and email communications that goes out. Item number four, winter operations, table one, and you'll also find appendix three with the five-year summary. Item number five, county structure, contract administration, and the engagement with WSP Canada for the administration and construction supervision for projects that were previously approved. Moving on to bylaws, item number six, recreational trail governing bylaw, resolution number OPCC 240556, moved by chair, seconded by committee. The county council adopt a bylaw to regulate and govern the use of lands identified as County of Renfrew recreational trails as linear parks, and that a bylaw 119-18 be repealed. And the background is there. You'll recall that that came to us before. And this is coming back from the Trail Advisory Committee with no changes. Item number seven, PWC 202401, County Road One River Road Rehabilitation, resolution number OPCC 240557, moved by chair, seconded by committee. The county council approved contract PWC 202401 as submitted by Bonashire Excavating, Inc., Renfrew, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Road One River Road from Pool Street to Dockard Street, a distance of 2.3 kilometers, township of McNabb-Brayside, and from Algonquin Trail to Bonashire River, a distance of 1.88 kilometers, township of Horton, in the amount of $1,564,525.20 plus applicable taxes. And the county, county council adopt a bylaw to execute the contract. And you'll see the tender responses and the financial implications with respect to the budget. Item number eight, PWC 202419, County Road 19 Mud Lake Road Rehabilitation, resolution number OPCC 240558, moved by chair, seconded by committee. The county council approved contract PWC 202419 as submitted by Walker Construction Limited, Niagara Falls, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Road 19 Mud Lake Road from County Road 24 White Lake Road to Pembroke South City Limit, a distance of five kilometers, township of Laurentian Valley, in the amount of $747,507, plus applicable taxes. And the county council adopt a bylaw to execute the contract. You'll see the tender submissions and the financial implications with respect to the budget. Item number nine, PWC 202430, County Road 30 Lake Dory Road Rehabilitation, resolution number OPCC 240559, moved by chair, seconded by committee. The county council approved contract PWC 202430, submitted by Bonashire Excavating, Inc., Renfrew, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Road 30 Lake Dory Road from Spurborough Road to Trailblazers Road, a distance of 2.28 kilometers, township of North Agona, Wilberforce, in the amount of $1,372,377.04 plus applicable taxes. And the county council adopt a bylaw to execute the contract. You'll see the tender submissions and the budget implications. Item number 10, PWC 202464, Contract Extension, Rehabilitation of County Road 64 Opiana Road, resolution number OPCC 240560, moved by chair, seconded by committee. The county council amend bylaw 2424, being a bylaw for the execution of contract PWC 202464, County Road 64 Opiana Road Rehabilitation, to approve an extension to the project limits to a maximum of $1,400,000, and that the funds be taken from the current surplus in the 2024 Capital Works budget. You will see that a lot of the tenders that are coming in are, quite a few are under budget, so we're taking advantage of that to extend this project. Item number 11, PWC 202465, County Road 65 Centennial Lake Road Rehabilitation, resolution number OPCC 240561, moved by chair, seconded by committee. That county council approved contract PWC 202465, submitted by 1956466 Ontario, Inc., operating as JWK Contracting, Pembroke, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Road 65 Centennial Lake Road from Bruham-Matawacan Township Line to Civic Address 2872, a distance of 2.23 kilometers, township of Greater Matawaska, in the amount of $867,248.63 plus applicable taxes. And the county council adopt a bylaw to execute the contract. Background, the tender submissions and the financial implications with respect to the budget. Item number 12, PWC 202470, County Road 70 Ruby Road Rehabilitation, resolution number OPCC 250562, moved by chair, seconded by committee. The county council approved the contract PWC 202470 as submitted by 1954664, sorry, 1956466, Ontario Incorporated, operating as JWK Contracting, Pembroke, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Road 70 Ruby Road from County Road 512 Brunel Road to Gorman Road, a distance of 4.28 kilometers, township Killaloo-Hagadine-Richards, in the amount of $1,192,373.78 plus applicable taxes. And the county council adopt a bylaw to execute the contract. You'll see the tender submissions and the budget implications. Item number 13, PWC 202403, County Road 508 Calibogu Road Rehabilitation, resolution number OPCC 240563, moved by chair, seconded by committee. The county council approved contract PWC 202403 as submitted by McCray Excavating, Inc., Pembroke, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Road 508 Calibogu Road from Stacy Drive to Goschen Road, a distance of 4.02 kilometers, township of McNabb-Brayside, in the amount of $1,338,036 plus applicable taxes. And the county council adopt a bylaw to execute the contract. The tender submissions are there, and the financial summary with relationship to the budget. Item number 14, PWC 202428, County Road Structure B108 Traymore Bridge Rehabilitation, resolution number OPCC 240564, moved by chair, seconded by committee. The county council approved contract PWC 202428 as submitted by DW Building Restoration, Inc., Ottawa, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Structure B108 Traymore Bridge, located on Traymore Road, approximately 350 meters north of County Road 58 Round Lake Road, township of Killaloo-Hagadine-Richards, in the amount of $467,748 plus applicable taxes. And the county council adopt a bylaw to execute the contract. You will see the tender submissions and the financial implications with relation to the budget. Item number 15, PWC 202468, County Structure C268, St. Columcille Culvert Rehabilitation, resolution number OPCC 240565, moved by chair, seconded by committee. That county council approved contract PWC 202468 as submitted by Dalcon Construction Limited, Ottawa, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Road Structure C268, St. Columcille Culvert, located on County Road 58 Round Lake Road, approximately 50 meters south of TV Tower Road, township of Laurentian Valley, in the amount of $262,712 plus applicable taxes. And the county council adopt a bylaw to execute the contract. Background shows the tender submissions and the relationship to the budget. Item number 16, Off-Road Vehicles on County of Renfrew Roads, resolution number OPCC 240566, moved by chair, seconded by committee. The county council adopt a bylaw to regulate the operation of off-road vehicles on County of Renfrew roads, to update the restrictions for off-road vehicles, and that a bylaw 721, 5623, and 7723 be repealed. And you will see the background stemming from a request from the town of Petawawa to include and update some of the county roads within the town of Petawawa. Item number 17, County Road 512 Foy Mount Road Property Purchase Amendments, resolution number OPCC 240567, moved by chair, seconded by committee. The county council amend bylaw 1623, being a bylaw to acquire lands on County Road 512 Foy Mount Road for the following listed properties. Part one and two on Plan 49R-20185 from Robert and Cecilia Bulow in the amount of $2,000, sorry, $2,259.53, and part one and two on Plan 49R-20183 from David Hoy in the amount one eighty-three, uh, from David Hoyey, in the amount of two thousand dollars. And that the properties described be dedicated as part of the public highway upon registration of the transfer documents. Um, and I believe we were reassured that these are the final two pieces of property within these sections, uh, to, uh, continue to complete the, uh, reconstruction of, uh, um, Foymont Road. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and Committee members Bennett, Emo, Lynch, Mackenzie, Watt, and Wilmer.
Thank you, Chair. Moving on, Members of County Council, uh, the, your questions, comments, concerns on item number one? Item two? Item three? Item four? Item number five? Item number six? Item number seven? Item number eight? Item nine? Member from Madmas and Bromley, please.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Uh, through you to, uh, probably Mr. Hanrath, but I will certainly defer to, uh, my colleague from, from, uh, Deep River. Uh, I'm, I'm, of course, um, very pleased at, generally speaking, um, I think the next item recognizes the, um, the overall, um, capital program variance has been a surplus. Very pleased at that. And I understand that there's always variances here, but I'm, I'm kind of contrasting in particular items nine and thirteen because they are substantial, uh, changes. So this item nine, uh, is, uh, twenty-two percent overestimate, and item thirteen, scroll there, I'm not sure which road that way that was, uh, Caliboggy Road, is forty-four percent under budget. And I'm just wondering, um, to be that substantial variance, uh, from, from budget, uh, what is, is, uh, what is driving those, that significant variance?
Mr. Hanrath, please. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Chair.
Uh, sure, thank you, uh, Warden. Um, we're certainly pleased with a lot of these recon, uh, construction projects that are coming in, um, under, under budget, um, in contrast to the, the first one that we saw this year, uh, on the bridge work that was significant, significantly over. What we're finding, what we find on item number nine is there's a significant portion of this, uh, includes metal guardrails, and it seems to be the metal that's, that's causing uh, some of the increase in costs, uh, as opposed to the other ones where we're finding uh, advantageous prices for, uh, for pavement and things like that. Uh, I don't know if Mr. Hanrath wanted to add to that.
Mr. Hanrath?
Uh, thank you, Warden. Through you to the Council for Madmas and Bromley. Uh, in addition to the guardrail, there's significantly more culverts on this section of road as well, which has increased that price over our typical benchmark estimates as well. Uh, if I may, I can touch on the County Road Five Oh Eight question as well. That one came in slightly under because we've, uh, we didn't necessarily have to go with a pulverize and pave as the initial benchmark cost was at the start of the year. We've enacted a stress-absorbing membrane interlayer. So it's a, uh, reinforced layer that goes over top of the existing asphalt for one of the sections of Five Oh Eight, and then is paved directly over top. Uh, from discussions with other municipalities that have used it, they've used it in place of pulverizing pave with great success on roads that are not quite in the poorest condition, but are still past that over, straight overlay stage.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you through you to, uh, both the Chair and Mr. Hanrath. Is it accurate then, uh, to state that, uh, essentially on Caliboggy Road or Five Oh Eight, that it was a scope change? And as a, uh, one B, is this being viewed as somewhat of a pilot, or is this something that potentially, uh, could be part of our capital program moving forward, uh, that this might be realized, uh, or might be utilized to realize, uh, some reduced capital expenditure?
Mr. Hanrath?
Thank you, Warden. Through you to the Council for Madmas and Bromley. Uh, a scope change on one small section of it, which we've seen a substantial savings on because it was in slightly better condition than the rest. The rest is still looking at a pulverize and pave. However, we are going to monitor the two sections at the same time to see if this Sammy and overlay treatment is something that we can realize significant savings in our ten-year plan by enacting more often.
And supplementary?
Uh, thank you. And, and just to put a fine point on it, it may be a small section, but it's like a forty-four percent, uh, surplus variance or savings on what was budgeted. So pending, of course, uh, what the lifecycle may be and what our experience may be moving forward on this, it seems that there is a, a pretty significant potential, uh, for this, this approach. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Warden.
Seeing no more questions, we'll move to item number ten. And member from Madmas and Bromley, please.
Uh, thank you once again, Mr. Warden. Just, uh, wanted to draw, uh, a couple of things. Uh, first question is, so in analyzing the, the cost per kilometer, if you will, uh, of the initial eight point one nine, uh, kilometers of roadway, it came out to, uh, two hundred and thirty, just over two hundred and thirty thousand dollars per kilometer. At that rate, uh, the additional five point three three kilometers should be driving an additional cost of one and a quarter, just under one and a quarter million. Uh, and there's a variance on my math of about a hundred and seventy-three thousand. So I'm, uh, through you again, uh, to the Chair or Mr. Hanrath as most appropriate. Uh, is the expectation on extending this that we would still likely realize the same cost per kilometer? Is this, the one point four million essentially an upset limit? Uh, perhaps of some clarification?
Mr. Hanrath, please.
Thank you, Warden. Through you to the Council for Madmas and Bromley. That is correct. The one point four is an upset limit. Our anticipated cost would be closer to what you've calculated.
Supplementary?
Uh, thank you, and, and not on that particular subject, but still staying on this same item, um, Mr. Warden, I just wanted to note, in the background, uh, within the third sentence, it says, as noted in the variance report, there's approximately two point seven six two million in surplus. Approximately one point one three five, uh, of this amount is carryover for projects that have been deferred, and that is absolutely true. That has been deferred, but do keep in mind as well, uh, that we have also funded an additional expansion, uh, project, which is, um, Murphy Road, I believe, uh, in the Town of Petawawa, of just under a million dollars. But for, uh, taking on that, that, uh, substantial expansionary project, that two point seven would be substantially higher. It would in fact be, uh, something more on the order of three point five million. So just something for, uh, Council, keep in mind, that is the variance that we've been seeing across all of these. And in fact, Opianga Road itself might have been the single largest variance that we were seeing on the eight point one nine kilometers. Uh, so sometimes the stars do align, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. And Chair, please.
Yeah, and thanks for that comment, and hopefully we continue to see those. So one of the things that we tend to evaluate, uh, in this case is, uh, can, should we, can we take advantage of favorable pricing this year and extend some of those projects? Some of it maybe being catch-up, or some of it is certainly going to be doing work that, uh, that we would ultimately do in subsequent years. So, uh, those are kind of things that, that we balance off, uh, certainly in the, these cases where we're seeing, uh, very favorable, favorable pricing.
Thank you. Item number eleven, member from Whitewater, please.
Yeah. Thanks, uh, Warden. I'd just come back to number ten. Um, question, I just, the, the last sentence of the background, where it talks about the impact for the asset management plan, I'm just, have you provided more context? To me, we're, we're adding the five kilometers in now, and price favorable, appreciate it. But longer, doesn't that just mean that it's going to squeeze up our, we're going to have to do more kilometers within a tighter frame in the future? So therefore have some bigger impact in the future?
Mr. Hanrath?
Uh, from a timing perspective, that could be the case. However, it would be, at the moment, we're looking at bumping up a section of road two years that was originally planned for twenty twenty-seven, or three years, sorry. Um, the next treatment on this section of road would be something like a micro-surfacing. So we would done the whole section in one single surface treatment, just because it's a low cost per kilometer. But whenever it comes time to do a pulverizing pave or a reconstruction, we would break it up into smaller sections.
Okay, thank you. Item number eleven, item twelve, item thirteen, item number fourteen, item number fifteen. Oh, I'm sorry, question is, uh, sorry, the member from Petawawa.
Thank you, Warden, and through you, just, just an observation and then perhaps a question. But in all of the roadworks projects, the tenders are, there's not a lot of variance between the low bid and the high bid. But then when we get to the bridges and the culverts, there's quite a wide variance between the low bid and the high bid. I'm just wondering if there's a reasoning for those projects having such a wide variety?
Mr. Hanrath?
Uh, thank you, Warden. Through you to the Council from the Town of Petawawa. Uh, there can be many different approaches that can be taken with structures, I guess would be the best way to put it. Some company may have a, an approach that they can do it for a lesser cost. However, we don't know the exact details of where they're realizing their savings. Uh, it could be what supplier they're using, if they do the work themselves, or if they have to hire subs or suppliers to bring the materials in for them. That primarily drives where we see the difference in costs, but it's that the complexity of the bridges can contribute to that a great deal.
Thank you. Item number sixteen, I believe we got to. Oh, member from, uh, Petawawa again.
Thank you, Warden. You're not looking in our direction over here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm doing, I'm doing the circle, but I, for some reason, I kind of moved this about an inch.
Uh, just some background, and then I want, I'd like to say thanks, but this is phase two of, uh, Petawawa's opening up of more roads to ATVs. Uh, we're taking baby steps, but this, uh, has opened up the entire east side of the boulevard from Golf Course Road up to Silky Drive, with the purpose of allowing ease of access to the Algonquin Trail for our residents. Uh, so thanks to the county for working with us and allowing access across all of your roads to allow our residents to get to the Algonquin Trail. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. And member from Deep River?
Yeah, uh, thanks for that. Uh, just, uh, some added information, um, Deep River did this, uh, based on that same premise, was to give access from the Algonquin Trail to the town, or vice versa, for people in town to get out. Uh, and I think primarily, um, that, that is what is happening. Uh, just for everybody's reassurance, uh, we don't see hundreds of ATVs driving around on the streets on a daily basis. There are, there are some, um, but I would say our experience is, uh, that they've been very respectful. The, the speed is twenty kilometers an hour and, and, uh, like, we see people going to the grocery store and things like that, but it, it has not caused any problems in the Town of Deep River. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further questions on, uh, sixteen, we'll move to item number seventeen. The report as a whole. Could I have a mover, please?
Um, including the just over nine million dollars in capital projects, uh, so moved.
Thank you. You heard the report and the explanations. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried, thank you, Council. And we'll move to Development and Property, please.
Thank you, Warden. Excuse me. To the, to the Council of the Corporation of the County of Renfrew, Members of County Council, we, your Development and Property Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Information, item number one, is the Rural Changemakers Program, and the, uh, applications for the twenty twenty-four program opened on May the first, twenty twenty-four, and will close on July the first, with the selection process commencing on August the twenty-fourth for up to thirty-six motivated young adults. Item number two is the Ontario Agriculture Hall of Fame, and nominations are open for the, uh, induction into the twenty twenty-five Ontario Agriculture Hall of Fame. Only members of the Ontario Agriculture Hall of Fame Association may nominate candidates for induction, and they are responsible for the one hundred thousand dollar cost. Item number three is the Cultural Connector Award, and nominations, once again, for this award are being accepted until May the thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Item number four is the Valley Diversity Emporium, and that will take place on June the twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, at the Nick Smith Center in Armpryor from ten AM to four PM. And the focus is on celebrating crafts and creations of progressive makers, showcasing equity-deserving vendors from across the Ottawa Valley. Item number five is the Ottawa Valley Tourist Association, OVTA, elected board, and the list of the new board members are there for your review. Item number six is the Renfrew County Forest Officially Sustainable Forestry Initiative Certification, and, uh, good news that, uh, it is now officially certified to the Sustainable Forest Management Standards of the Sustainable Forestry Initiative. Item number seven is the Basken Drive Subdivision Forty Seventeen dash one nine zero zero four in the Town of Armpryor. And this, uh, planned subdivision did receive final approval on April the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, and creates an additional twenty-four row housing units and sixty-four apartment units. Item number eight is the Pinnacle View Subdivision Forty Seventeen dash one eight zero zero three in the Town of Renfrew, and it received draft approval on May the seventh, twenty twenty-four. The plan will create sixty-two single-detached units, seventy, seventy semi-detached units, and seventy-two rows, row house units with a total of two hundred and four units, and the developer has three years to meet the conditions of the draft approval. Moving to resolutions, Resolution Number DP dash CC dash twenty-four dash zero five dash six seven, move by myself as Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council approve the terms of reference for the Renfrew County Agriculture Economic Development Committee as presented, and the background is there for your information. Item number ten is the International Student CAP, and Resolution Number DP dash CC dash twenty-four dash zero five dash six eight, move by myself as Chair, seconded by Committee. Whereas the federal government recently moved to limit the number of international students entering Canada to study, and whereas studies have demonstrated international students contribute over twenty-two point three billion per year to the Canadian economy, which is greater than exports of auto parts, lumber, or aircraft. And whereas students have also shown immigrants are forty percent more likely than Canadian-born individuals to own businesses in knowledge or technology-based industries. And whereas six in ten international students who were employed with paid earnings during their period of study or after graduation became landed immigrants within ten years of receiving their first study permit, compared with less than two in ten among those who did not work. And whereas it has been shown that nearly half of all international student post-secondary graduates who completed their studies within, or sorry, between twenty-ten and twenty-sixteen, remain in their province of study for the first year after graduation, compared with eight in ten domestic students. And whereas the Algonquin College Pembroke Campus has over two hundred and forty international students currently studying on campus in programs including practical nursing, early childhood education, personal support worker, computer programming, environmental management and assessment, social service worker, and outdoor adventure tourism, to name a few key programs. And whereas these students can work anywhere from twenty to forty hours per week within the community, and whereas a former pharmacist from India studying in Algonquin College's Regulatory Affairs Program is now a part-time pharmacy assistant in Pembroke, and many of the Pembroke Campus students are filling entry-level positions on local businesses, which is essential for our local economy because these positions have few applicants and high turnover rates. And local taxi companies have noted a significant amount of their business involves trips for international students from their residence to Algonquin College and to their place of employment. And whereas it has been shown international student graduates from Algonquin College have gone on to work locally in hospitals as nurse- have gone on to work locally in hospitals as nurses and IT professionals. And whereas Algonquin College has been a responsible manager of their foreign student education program. And whereas the federal government's decision to limit the number of students admitted to Canada to study purposes would have a significant negative impact on our local economy and community and on the rural Ontario economy, now therefore, the county of the council of the county of Renfrew requests that the federal government reconsider their decisions, reinstate the programs, reconsider the cap on the total hours permitted to work per week by returning to the pandemic level of 40 hours per week, and confer with the college and university representatives to ensure all students receive quality education experiences. And the background is there, and even though I think I covered 90% of it. And item number 11 is in regards to a request for additional funds, resolution number DP-CC-24-05-71, moved by myself as chair, seconded by committee. The county council approve an additional amount of $140,000 to complete the renovations at the Eganville paramedic base in order to execute the rear structure renovations, which I believe is the doors, and that the additional amount be taken from the capital building reserves. Again, this project is nearing completion, and this would certainly finish it off, and the background is there for your information. Item number 12 is resolution number DP-CC-24-05-73, and it's cutting red tape to build more homes, moved by chair, seconded by committee. That county council recommend that a letter under the warden's signature be sent to the Premier of Ontario and the Honourable Paul Calandra, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, recognizing the positives items introduced in Bill 185, Cutting Red Tape to Build More Homes Act 2024, to simplify home construction approvals. Once again, the background is there. Moving to bylaws, resolution number DP-CC-24-05-69, moved by myself as chair, seconded by committee. That county council adopt a bylaw to enter into a transfer payment agreement with the province of Ontario for the financial and program support of enterprise Renfrew County for the fiscal year April 1st, 2024 to March 31st, 2025. Again, the background is included. Item number 14 is the resolution being number DP-CC-24-05-70, moved by myself as chair, seconded by committee. The county council adopt a bylaw to prohibit certain activities on county of Renfrew-owned forests, and that bylaw 92-09 be repealed. Again, the background is there. Item number 15 is the contract award for the county administration building roof, resolution number DP-CC-24-05-72, moved by myself as chair, seconded by committee. The county council approve contract RE-2024-06-RP, as submitted by Irvcon Limited, Pembroke, Ontario, for the replacement of four flat roofs at the county administration building in the amount of $159,861 plus applicable taxes, and that county council adopt a bylaw to execute the contract. And the contract pricing is included. And all of which is respectfully submitted by myself as chair and committee members, Bennett, Eamon, Lynch, McKenzie, Service, Watt, and Weir. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns from members of council on item number one now. Item number two, small correction, it's $1,000 and not what was written on the chair's page of $100,000. That would be quite the induction fee. Item number three, item four, item five, item number six, item seven, item eight, item nine, item 10. Oh, I'm sorry. Member from Whitewater.
Thanks, Warden. Just on number 10, I was under the impression that housing was one of the major concerns with respect to international student caps. And I'm just, did Pembroke remark or Algonquin remark if there was an issue with housing, or is this something that Algonquin is able to ensure isn't a problem here, and therefore the cap isn't as applicable in our circumstances, for all of the other good reasons listed in that resolution?
And the focus was on if the cap was implemented. Housing didn't come up in the conversation with Algonquin College. Sorry, supplementary, or, okay, thank you. Any further comments? Thank you. And we'll move to item number 11. And so, Monshire Valley, and then the member from Amos and Bromley.
The member from Monshire Valley is deferring, Mr. Warden, so I shall go ahead. I'm in recollecting, and I didn't have time actually to go back to some of the source documents, both on the purchase and renovation. And my question is, was my understanding, and I get that I don't even know if it was a Class D estimate, or if it was a back-of-the-napkin estimate at the time that we were still negotiating for the purchase of the facility. But if memory serves, I thought that the then estimate was $400,000 for fit-up or renovation costs. Based on the information contained herein, it looks like it's probably headed for about $600,000 for completion. This drive-through entranceway at the back of the building being the one that's right in front of us, you know, I'm just kind of throwing out a number for what the pavement park, the paving and landscaping, et cetera, might be, but it seems like it's going to be closer to $600,000. And I'm questioning, what is the total budget? Because a second component that still is part of that initial question is that the drive-through aspect was discussed right from the get-go, and I question how it is now being considered as a separate part of the renovation and was not part of the initial tender process.
Mr. Davis?
Through you, Chair, through you, Warden. When you made the comment about, was it built on a napkin, the estimate? I don't want to say a napkin, it was the best guess at the time, best estimate at the time. The big drive for us, I guess a year ago now, tried to purchase this without going into the post-disaster requirements that was talked about, didn't know the requirements, and you'll see in your reports around $67,000. That wasn't, it was contemplated but didn't know that was going to happen, about that much. And so it was a very high-level approach. I'd call it a Class D estimate, really. Moving forward, this was discussed and mentioned at this committee and county council for the drive-through. It's just part of their process. It's a requirement for paramedic program. I don't want to say this is in that on at all. We did discuss this. I just wanted to bring this to this committee and county council to say, here we're at with the expenses. We do need more money to finish this for, to finish this at this stage. If that answers your question, through you, Warden.
Supplementary?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you to Mr. Davis. It does indeed answer the first component of the question, and I do understand that. And it's my understanding, again, based on recollection, which is fraught, but I apologize, I did not have time to go back to minutes, et cetera. But the comparison, even at the time that we were still engaged in negotiation, was the cost to erect from nothing was substantially more even on what we're anticipating now. But on the second question, where I'm going with this, is that the drive-through aspect had been part of the criteria from the time that we were even engaging in the discussion to purchase, and then when we did purchase and we began the process for the renovation, that the question is, why was that not part of the specification in the initial renovation job that's done, as opposed to now being viewed as its own project?
Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Warden, through you. So, when we purchased this and had the estimate, so to try to expedite the process, there's always a timeline involved. What we did, we compartmentalized each item. Instead of having one big RFP or one big construction project for the whole total, we compartmentalized it to do the inside office space, the garage space first, and then now we have this additional space, even though it's additional but still talked about. That's why it's coming up now, because we compartmentalized everything internally to keep that timeline in place.
Thank you. Member from Monshire Valley?
Thank you. I assumed that the member from Amos and Bromley was going to ask my questions before I got to them, but I do have more. You did indicate that this is a requirement for the paramedics. This is not a wish list. I think my concern in reading the package over the weekend was that I, knowing that building and knowing where the window structures are, et cetera, and not having an actual contract with somebody, and we're throwing out a number of $140,000, are we sure that's going to be enough? Because, again, knowing the building, I thought it would be a lot more. So I'm just...
Okay, thank you.
No, through you, Warden, this was not a napkin exercise. So, we've already engaged the engineer, we already have quotes to do the actual work for this specific idea, and the $140,000 is an upfront. And you'll notice in the package too, it's just not the garage door we're working on to get the final product done. So, we do have a better estimate than a napkin.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. And seeing no further questions, we'll move to item number 12, please. Member from Amos and Bromley?
Thank you once again, Mr. Warden, most appreciate your recognition. In reading this, and I'm drawn in particular to the second last paragraph and the last two sentences within that paragraph. "The implementation of these earlier bills required significant time and effort from county and local municipal staff. Likewise, the forthcoming reversals will demand considerable staff resources for review and implementation." This underscores that planning needs to be done on a systemic and systematic fashion, and trial balloons are inappropriate. We are all aware of the incredible pressurized environment. I see Mr. Davis is nodding, so no one probably more cognizant than he of the incredible challenge that has confronted us in planning. I know we're very fortunate to have a junior kind of contract planner, very good to have that person. Apparently his role has now been expanded, as I understand as well. The challenge is, though, that we have our planning staff engaged in a lot of work that isn't planning. This is the government that is committed to red tape reduction, and we have just dug a hole, and now we're filling the hole in. And my intent here is not in any way to get political, but if we are going to move forward in what we are constantly reminded of is the housing crisis, then we need to stop doing these things that perhaps are ideologically driven, I do not know, but it is such a challenge to allocate significant professional resources to these initiatives. And while they're engaged in these, they are not doing anything. As I'm looking at Mr. Davis's neighbor to his right, we don't have paramedics changing the tires on our ambulances. That would be an inefficient use of our paramedics. That is not what they are trained for. Likewise, our planners are constantly having to revise. I am at a loss now to understand how many, well, I never knew how many hours they had, but I'm sure there were at least three different sessions where this body was engaged in the whole process of how we were going to have to refund planning fees if deadlines weren't met. And I don't know how much of my time and our time collectively was used up in doing that, but it was for naught, as these are now being unwound again. So it is just to reiterate that this is why we have engagement and consultation with the frontline or service delivery agents, and that we pay substantial heed and assign appropriate weighting to the comments that are returned, because here we find ourselves that Bobby Hewing was in the shower all along, he hadn't died at all.
Yes, we have communicated that, just the time-consuming nature of changes, constant change, and smaller municipalities and rural municipalities are under-resourced to start with. So we're communicating that. And then also, you know, we've communicated some of the disappointment, I think, and frustration from the private sector and the individuals that are trying to sever a lot or develop a small subdivision. They're equally frustrated because they spend some money, they're starting on a process, then there's a pause while we try and scramble ahead of the government and figure out where they're going, and then you have to educate out as well. And so they're a little frustrated with that. So we've been conveying both messages. Hopefully this is the last. I think the message has been received, but have no way of being sure of that, but will, time will tell. But yes, we will take that into consideration, and I believe that Mr. Howard, whenever he meets with the MMH staff, which they meet, I believe, quarterly, he conveys that on our behalf as well. So we will keep conveying that. Thank you. Item number, I'm sorry, a member from Greater Matawaska.
Thank you, Warden, through you, and just to follow up on what my colleague said. So, since 2022, we've had six different changes to the Act, and just on Bill 185, the Environmental Registry of Ontario, just for Bill 185, we've had six separate changes in that as well. So it's just compounded, it's constantly changing, it's ever-changing, and it's just putting a lot of work out there for everybody. So I just wanted that, I don't, thank you.
Thank you. Item number 13, item 14, item 15. The report as a whole? Could I have a mover, please?
So moved, Warden.
You've heard the report, the questions and the explanations. Anything else? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried, thank you. With that, I'd like to get a mover in a second or for the following. Be it resolved that council move into a closed meeting pursuant to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001, as amended for the purpose of, A, to discuss the security of the property of the municipality or local board care for. The member from Killagney Richards, a member from Armpryor. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried, thank you very much. Yep.
Thank you, and welcome back to our viewing public. We'll be probably another 20 minutes or so to clean up some of the things. I'd like a mover and seconder, please, that County Council adopt a bylaw authorizing the Warden and CL/Deputy Clerk to enter into a three-year lease agreement with Care4 Health and Community Services located at 700 McKay Street, Pembroke, Ontario. Member from Greater Madawaska, seconded by the member from Deep River. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And was that a discussion, McNabb-Bryside?
Yes, if I may. So, I just wanted to mention that I'm very impressed and pleased with this very practical solution that's been found to something that came up, go all the way back to our strategic plan. This is an expression of this, and I compliment everybody who helped make this happen, including negotiation with other jurisdictions and third parties and whatnot. But my question is, because I'm not a member of any of the broader organizations, and OWC, for example, has a seven and seven. So, my question is for you, perhaps Chair, but are these sorts of things happening across eastern Ontario in any frequency?
Sure, I can provide you with a more detailed discussion on this. If you want to give me a call later on today on the way home, I have 45 minutes to fill your ear.
You know, just a short answer, yes, it's happening quite a bit, or no, this is rather unique, is all I'm looking for at this point. But I'll speak to you anytime for 45 minutes.
Okay, so we are unique, but following the same theme as many others. So, and I can give you some examples later on today.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so again, all those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried, thank you very much, council. And with that, we'll move to bylaws. That the bylaws listed on item 13 of the County Council agenda dated May 29, 2024 be deemed read three times and passed. And as you can see, they start with item A, Bylaw 7824, B, Bylaw 7924, C, Bylaw 8024, D, Bylaw 8124, Bylaw 8224, Bylaw 8324, Bylaw 8424, Bylaw 8524, Bylaw 8624, Bylaw 8724, Bylaw 8824, Bylaw 8924, Bylaw 9024, Bylaw 9124, Bylaw 9224, Bylaw 9324, Bylaw 9424, Bylaw 9524, Bylaw 9624, Bylaw 9724, Bylaw 9824, and Bylaw 9924, Bylaw 10024. And I believe there are three, oh, sorry, those are the three, I'm sorry. So that, so we have those in front of you. Could I have a mover, please? Moved by Town of Armire, seconded by the member from Laurentian Valley. And discussion, and the member from Amistone Bromley?
My apologies, Mr. Warden. I'm uncertain which of these is with respect to the delegation of authority. Perhaps you could read through all of those again.
I'll ask Mr. Kelly to be a little more precise.
Mr. Clerk wants to read it out. Do you want to read the new numbers?
I can do that.
Yeah, please.
So, on your agenda package, you'd have right up until 9724, I believe. And then additional bylaws that were read today were Bylaw 9824, and that was through the FNA Committee. Report a bylaw to delegate authority to provide certain delegations of authority from County Council to the Warden and/or senior county staff for the administration of the County of Renfrew. Bylaw 9924 was the, a bylaw to enter into a lease agreement with Care4 Health and Community Services. And Bylaw 100-24 was a bylaw to execute an agreement between the County of Renfrew and the Ministry of Long-Term Care for a 2024-25 level of care funding increase.
Thank you. Supplementary?
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Thank you through you to Ms. Dombrowski. I would seek to sever item 9824, and I do apologize, this probably would have been much more efficient and practical within the Finance Administration Department report. But I would like to consider this separately, please.
Okay, we can do that, thank you. And with that, are there any questions or observations on the rest of them? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried, thank you, council. And we'll move back to item 9824. And the member from Amistone Bromley?
Thank you very much, once again, Mr. Warden. And I'm, I do apologize again, so I had made some extensive notes at the Finance Administration Committee meeting back earlier this month, and I had passed some of those on. I think the initial one or two comments that I provided to Mr. Kelly were simply clerical or copy-editing corrections, remarks. And I think he may have already incorporated those within the document that council is now considering. Is that accurate?
Through you, Warden, that is accurate. We did update some of the procedures versus policy. There were some misreferenced or misnumbered bylaws as well, so we clarified that. And for the clarified some of the points of interest that were raised during the FNA Committee.
Yeah, and one, I believe, Mr. Warden, one I just do recall it had listed, I think in the definitions, that County Council itself was one of the, was going to be one of the delegated agencies. That was one of the ones I suggested should be changed. In any event, those were simply clerical, and they have been accommodated. But I do have, my perspective on delegating authority is to be guarded in that. I view the flip side of the same coin, that is responsibility and obligation. And I view those very seriously, and I jealously and zealously guard against those things that are supposed to be exercised by council. I do, however, recognize that there are times when a delegation is, a delegation of that authority is appropriate. In this event, there were several suggestions. I think it was on receiving perhaps contributions or sources of funding to the municipality. Again, I apologize to council for not being able to clearly identify the pages, et cetera. But my suggestion on items 4.1, 4.2, 5.1, 5.2, were all that, that the language be utilized that would make those delegated authorities consistent with the procurement policy. policy, i.e. the procurement policies does have a schedule, an evaluation on where a director has spending authority, where the CAO has spending authority, where committee has spending authority, and ultimately then council as the final arbiter of any decision. And I thought that those would be appropriate in this instance for those to mirror the procurement policy. Item 16.9, this one was a little bit confusing because it speaks to, again, unfortunately, I wonder if the perk perhaps might have the bylaw, or the actual bylaw opener is Article 16.9, and it seemed that there was a substantial divergence between two different items that were included in 16.9, because one was underground infrastructure, and the other one, I think, kind of was making reference to an aesthetic improvement.
Would you like me to read that?
Please, if Ms. Dombrowski could read it, yeah, please.
So, 16.9 is the delegate is Director of Public Works and Engineering and the Director of Development and Property, and the delegation of authority is the authority to arrange for and permit the planting of trees on county property, including county rights of way and easements for underground infrastructure.
So, perhaps it is misinterpreting. What I'm hearing it read, I'm wondering if, if in fact, the planting of trees, the approval for the planting of trees on easements is what is being implied here, because what I suggested is we're delegating the authority to grant easements, that is an entirely distinct and divergent element to this. I would not be prepared to grant the authority to grant easements under staff.
If I can address that, that is absolutely correct. It's actually doing the works of those types of aesthetics along the rights of way, but it's in concert with both the Director of Development and Property, who's likely through the Forestry Division, and Public Works, who's doing this. In the underground infrastructure, perhaps there's, I won't say root system sprinklers, or some other system that would happen along that. And easement would be entirely different, and there are policies on how we grant easements to individuals or otherwise.
Okay, and that clarity is important. So, in fact, and I'm not sure if it was viewed as an aesthetic, but certainly from a landscaping perspective, if nothing else, the planting of trees on roadways, trails, or where underground infrastructure exists, that is the intent of this clause, not that we delegate to the Director of Development and Property and Operations the approval authority on giving easements.
Through you, Warden, that is, your interpretation is correct, now.
Okay, thank you. For section 13.4, and the note that I have is it seems more appropriate for the Director of DNP, and in 14.4, it was the opposite. So, I wonder, once again, if I could prevail upon Ms. Dombrowski to read aloud item 13.4.
So, on 13.4, the delegate is Director of Public Works and Engineering and/or the Director of Development and Property. The delegation of authority is the authority to enter into agreements for restricted access to county property for the purpose of bird observation.
Okay, that doesn't sound like what I had looking at. Perhaps those have already been incorporated into the document, have they, Mr. Kelly?
Absolutely, and thank you, Warden, and through you, Warden, I should say, is, yes, they have, councillor. So, that comment was taken from committee, and it was deemed that it wasn't, I won't say appropriate, it wasn't deemed absolutely correct, so your comment was right, and was amended for this purpose.
And I'm assuming then the follow-on, 14.4, was probably, the suggestion at the time would have been incorporated into that as well.
Absolutely right.
Okay, okay. I think this is the final one. Several references are made to purchasing bylaw GAO1, however, I don't believe this bylaw exists. Okay, I think you probably corrected that one as well. There is no purchasing bylaw, there is a procurement of goods and services.
It's procurement bylaw GAO01, yes, and that has been revised as the wording, as exercised, I think is what we continually change, or as, yeah, as exercised.
Okay, and there was conflicting citation of procedure for sale in real property bylaws, there were two distinct ones recited, being bylaw 41-95 and bylaw 5-06, and has that, have you cleaned that up, or are in fact there two distinct bylaws directing the procedures for sale of real property?
Strangely enough, there is two, there is two bylaws. One has been repealed by bylaw, the latter, but officially, we have not removed it from the bylaw directory. So, when we did our search, those two bylaws still exist, although the latter says that they'll shalt repeal the previous one, it just hadn't functionally been done yet. So, we will take it, it will be functionally done, and we've only referenced the newest bylaw.
Okay, thank you, and those were the clarity, and I support the notionally, the delegation of authority. I am not persuaded that in most instances, it needs to be done as a standing initiative, where we are in fact divesting ourselves of obligation and approval authorities, and there are several that I am opposed to, but I think that it would probably be a poor use of everyone's time to engage in any of those. I will be opposed to this, but I'm not going to get into the weeds on that, and we will see what the will of council is. Thank you.
Thank you. So, could I have a mover and a seconder for bylaw 99-24, sorry, 98-24, please? Boncher Valley, seconded by Killuagui Richards. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? One? Okay, thank you, it's passed, thank you, council. And next, we'll move to committee-written reports, and we'll start with AMO. We haven't met since last month, and I wasn't able to make that meeting, so we'll move to ERN, is?
We meet tomorrow.
Yep. And Federation of Canadian Municipalities?
Thank you, Warden. No written report, however, just to update County Council, I will be attending the annual conference general meeting June 6th to 9th in Calgary, where I have put my name forward to run for a position in the Ontario Caucus and the Board of Directors. Nominations have closed, there are 18 people running for nine positions, so it will be an uphill battle, let's put it that way, so.
Okay, thank you, and good luck, as always. And Roma, please.
Thank you, Warden. So, everybody got my very brief Roma report from May 17th, it was the Friday before the long weekend, so the meeting was very short, and it was, you know, we were keeping up pace. However, we did do our cross-provence check-in, and I've spoken to a few people about this today, tax rear increases, we talked about satellite internet and broadband and national housing strategies, obviously, housing is the biggest deal right now. We had then had a lengthy discussion about items for delegation requests at the upcoming AMO conference. I have not mentioned the names of the ministers, but rather their ministry, just in case. So, rural healthcare, housing and homelessness, continuation of OCIF and OMF, energy needs and small dam projects, and internet by 2025, the infrastructure bank, and water and wastewater. I did promise, the warden, that I would retract my, that I was never giving up on the local share, so I took that off the list. We had some AMO policy updates, and I will have a better outline of these for you next month, but AMO policy is working on broadband by '25, housing and infrastructure with the Team Ontario approach, Bill 185, cutting red tape for building, and the irony is not lost on any of us, that Bill 185, cutting red tape is an oxymoron, affordable housing being development charge exempt, building code new for 2025, and I don't know how many of you knew this, I did not know this until May 17th, that our Ontario building code doesn't necessarily follow the national standard, which included like green initiatives. So, it'll be interesting to see all of our CBOs in 2025, getting up to speed on yet another new building code. Ontario Health Teams, the need for municipal participation on boards. On June 5th, the Teeny Tiny Summit is being held in Tweed at the Kwanis Pavilion. Tweed is in Zone 6, so I'll be attending on behalf of Roma. The cost of entry is $40, and if anyone would like to join me, the registration is on the OMAFRA website. The theme for this summit is creating community wealth and wellbeing. Keynote speaker is Peter Kenyon, and he's definitely been doing his rounds in Zone 6. I understand he will be in Headclara Mariah on Saturday night, but if anybody wants to go to the Teeny Tiny Summit next Wednesday in Tweed, I am going, and anybody is more than welcome to join me. And that's my report, Warden, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? And yes, the member for Whitewater.
Thanks, Warden. Just the point on the AMO policy for Ontario Health Teams and the need for municipal participation on boards, once we have that update, is that going to be possible, that we could bring that to one of our committees for review, just so we can learn more about it in some greater detail?
Sure, there's been two previous reports, so I'll try and dig those out, and then the new one shouldn't, it won't change much from the previous ones. Just a quick note, the AMO policy team has been revamped, just with people, it wasn't any kind of dissatisfaction, some of the, long time, people have moved on to other, to other things, like Matt Wilson went to the gas company, I pay my bills to, I can't remember who they are, and now he's with Hydro One. And Amber Crawford, I believe, ended up with one of the consultants, and so the rest have moved on as well. So, it's just a brand-new team, eight new people coming from a variety of backgrounds, so it's going to be an interesting time. And then we have Lindsay Davis, who is the chair, or is the manager, and very qualified, she's very qualified. So, with that, we'll move on to, oh, I'm sorry, Headclara Mariah.
Thank you, I just wanted to have a shout-out to all of my compatriots there in the room, that Peter Kenyon will be arriving in Headclara Mariah tomorrow evening, and is going to spend at least four or five days enjoying the river country. He's also going to be doing a tour of Deep River on Friday, and we still have tickets to come and chat with him and have a few cocktails on Saturday at our municipal hall. So, I wanted to thank, thank the shout-out that I'm getting from the County of Renfrew, and a certain Ms. Murphy, thanks.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move to notice of motions. Seeing none. And now, we'll move to members' written motions. I'm not aware of any, and I don't see any. And we'll move to new business, and we'll start with Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Warden, and through you to council. So, I did want to address Monday's meetings at Queens Park, we've talked around them today, but for the members listening and watching, Monday was a spectacular day at Queens Park. For the first time ever, as we understand it, we actually occupied a room at Queens Park, the caucus room, as it's well-known, and had ministers come to us after question period in the afternoon. So, what we were engaged with was a series of six or seven meetings that kind of seemingly a blur, I know we had several of them back-to-back, and had full access to ministers of the caucus for at least half an hour, and many of them longer. And I don't remember or recall an AMO or Roma where I've actually been able to sit down with anybody for half an hour, no less than 12 minutes without a knock on the door. So, to have this type of access to a minister and allow us to fully flesh out all of our issues, ideas, and concepts was unheard of, and Ministry Yakubowski, of course, was, or Mr. Yakubowski, MP for Yakubowski, they did call a minister, surprisingly, a few times, because they respect him so much, was behind it and helping us put this schedule together. The warden has already addressed who we met with several times, but to reiterate, we've met with, we quickly met with Minister Parsa in the hallway, who was quite enthralled with that. He assigned his parliamentary assistant to come up and speak to us later in the day from Ministry of Community Services. Minister Calandra and Flack met with us together, Minister Thompson met with us at OMAFRA, Minister Sekaria with MTO, Minister Sirma with Infrastructure, and Minister Tobolo with Mental Health. We actually took another conversation offline with Mr. Flack, and Minister Tobolo continues to call us regularly since that meeting, so we are deeply engaged, and it's no small effort. There was definitely an army behind what we did, I mean, what you see in front of me today as a binder, that I would think about 50% of the administration staff in SLT had a hand in in the last four days before we got to Queens Park. The gentleman sitting beside me has been on the road for about six days straight, and it's been a trying time for all of us, and of course, the members of council, the chairpersons that came down to, to be the faces of each endeavor, was well worth it, I believe, and I'm not sure what else to say, but thank you, I think this was, this was great. I know Minister Thompson from OMAFRA took pictures of what we did and said, I'm going back to my own municipality and getting them to do this, because this was hugely successful. So, we're, you know, flattery is great, and we'll take it, but this was, this was an endeavor that is well worth it, and definitely will shape our conversations at AMO this year, because we got more than we thought we'd get out of these meetings, quite honestly, and it will shape our future conversations with these ministries. Cheryl, I know there might be other comments from the members who attended.
Member from Laurentian Hills, please.
Thank you. Yes, Craig, that was quite a day at Queens Park, I've never been there, but I was very impressed, and I was mostly impressed with our staff, I mean, I was very proud of you guys, you just, I think every minister that was there was just, you know, left with their jaws open as to what innovation and forward-thinking that has, was brought to them, and certainly the way that the day was set up, as you said, will be copied, I know for sure, because they said they just love the way that everything happened. So, just well done, and very proud of all of everybody that was there, thank you.
And member from North Agona, please.
Thank you, Warden, and yes, just to echo what my colleague from Laurentian Hills has said, very great presentations by staff. I think as well that the reason we got the audience we did and the time we did is because of the successful initiatives that the county has been able to bring forward to the province in the past. Certainly makes it easier to attract that audience, and you're right, that it certainly was much more productive than getting 10 or 15 minutes at Roma or AMO. Thanks again to everyone involved.
Yeah, we had went with an agenda for it to be a very casual meeting, and, you know, we put our points out, and then there was a good back-and-forth with the ministers. They came in, didn't bring any binders, they brought one staff person, and that was part of why we had to cut back a little bit, because they, it was requested that we not show up with 14 or 15 people, but they wanted to hear, and they wanted to hear from the experts, which is staff. And so, I know that it was outside of their wheelhouse, so, you know, I don't think that when they wandered up to guidance in high school at 17 to say, oh, I want to eventually have a career path where I'm presenting to a minister, and they're asking me questions, I'm pretty sure that wasn't their first choice. But they did an excellent job of speaking up respectfully, correcting the narrative if necessary, and the ministers were very, very attuned to what they were presenting, and made lots of copious notes. And as I said, Minister Thompson asked us for the recommendations from the Housing Summit, and then from the Mesa Summit as well. They had a, had one of their staff with them who took notes as well, and we made, they were very obliging in terms of making sure that we had a contact to follow this through. And so, it was
And so it was, it was something I think that all of us had hoped for over the years. And the member from Deep River. Would you like to comment?
I still didn't have my hand out, but, but yeah, just I agree with the comments that are there. I thought it was very valuable. And as I mentioned earlier, I think a couple of the ministers were kind of on the edge of their chairs, and they, and they, they wanted to say something but couldn't. And, and I'm, they wanted to say something about funding. So I think the will is there on their part. I think they're, I think the province is working through some details, but they were certainly impressed with the initiatives, some past initiatives that have happened in Renfrew County, and certainly these ones with Mesa and, and the, the whole wraparound services with addiction and, and mental health and housing and, and all of that. So I, I, it was, it was well worth the time to go, and I was pleased with the outcome of it, so.
So in the future, as, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just one comment. Our MPP, John Yakubuski, had said many times that he wasn't able to stay for the whole afternoon. I don't think he left the room. No. So he was totally enthralled and, and proud as well as to what was going on.
Yes, and, and, you know, I don't think we can underplay how valuable his contribution was. Like, he wrangled ministers to make sure they were there, and his staff were constantly checking to make sure they were going to be on time. And John, to, to his credit, spoke up quite a few times, and he emphasized our past successes with VTAC, with community paramedicine, starting here in the, in 2008 or '09, I believe it was. And so John mentioned that, mentioned all sorts of other innovative things that we've done. So he has clearly identified with the successes that we've had here and is identified with them as well. And we had a couple of MPPs walk in to drop off their cards to ask about VTAC for their communities. And so I know that Chief Nolan's chatting with them. So just to reassure you that as we have more opportunities, it's my intent to bring as many people as we can so they can experience it. So we will, you know, try and rotate through the members of the chamber so that they can be part of those. North Agona?
Thank you, Warden. I just thought it was worth mentioning, it just came to mind, that rookies only in the sense that it was their first time, but by no means rookies. Acting Director Hanrath and Acting Director Patrick, or not acting, I mean Director Patrick, their first time in front of the ministers did a fantastic job. I know talking to Taylor on the way home, he says it was pretty nerve-wracking initially, but he certainly didn't appear to be during the meetings. Thanks.
It, it was only nerve-wracking for him because he wasn't sure when I was going to throw it to him. Deep River, please. You do have your hand up this time.
Yes, thank you for that, and, and not going to throw Taylor under the bus. I just, I wanted to point out, just a, a small comment, that while not unique, after MPP Yakubuski's introduction at, or during, at the beginning of question period, that our delegation received a standing ovation from the Assembly, so.
That's true, yeah. I had forgotten about that. That happens all the time, for me, anyway. No, that, you're right, that is unique. Thank you. And Amos and Bromley, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden, and unfortunately could not attend, commend both the elected and staff for, for representing, and I think that they did an outstanding job. The recurring theme that I'm hearing throughout today's session, though, is, and I know that each one of us sitting at this table, it's the same thing when there's a delegation coming before us in our lower-tier municipalities, et cetera. Don't come to me and say, "Something needs to be done," and someone needs to do something. Every time that we have approached the province, we have concrete, well-documented, well-reasoned plans, concrete plans of action. And this is what the provincial government, or any governing body for that matter, they're aware that something needs to be done. But we have as many ideas as any of the staff members that are working within their, their political offices, or for that matter, even within their, their government offices, their bureaucratic offices. That is the key takeaway, is don't go there unless you have very specific, very concrete examples and plans on how you can advance an issue and move something forward. I am reminded of pre-COVID, actually of, of standing adjacent to Chief Nolan as Premier Ford was not two feet in front of him when we were discussing, I can't recall now even what we were discussing, Chief. And after about a two-minute presentation, the premier's response was, "Make that happen." So when you put concrete, well-reasoned, well-thought-out plans in front of them, that is what gets you traction.
Thank you. They, they hide him from us when we come down now from Renfrew County because they're worried we're going to get more money, so we don't get to see him. Thank you for that, though. It's, you're, you're quite spot-on, and I think we learned two valuable lessons. One was, we may not be aggressive enough, we're very polite. And the second thing is to make sure our ask is at the front of the document and quite clear, and then use the rest of the time to do background. So that, we, we had sort of surmised that, I think, or felt intuitively that was something that needed to change. But it was reconfirmed in a conversation with a, with a minister, with Craig, so we, it wasn't, it was something that was necessary to change. I have to say, and just pile on and say, what a great job Craig and all of the staff did to get us there, and then while we were there. And I'm not talking about the presentations, I'm talking about the room. We had at least seven pull-up graphics which showed our forests, it showed VTAC, it showed Mesa, and we're missing a couple. But infrastructure projects. So when they walked in the room, those were six feet tall, hung up. We had the tablecloths with our names on them and coffee cups and stuff like that, which are just very, you know, professional. Then we also had a board that was looped and was showing pictures of, of Renfrew County flipping every five minutes. And then we actually managed to loop into their, into their TVs on the wall and took down the party symbol and ran our information as well. So anytime they looked away from the table, there was information, like soft information. So congratulations to, to put that together, and then just to synchronize it and make it work. And that, those are the kinds of touches. You can be as verbal as you want, but there has to be a takeaway. And we had a nice, a nice going-away bag for them as well. And some of the people were coming in that weren't meeting with us because they'd heard we were there. And we have such a good reputation for great loot bags, they were wandering in and taking them. So it was, it was a, a good day. And I'm hopeful we'll repeat it again soon. And I know staff just cringe when they hear that. So with that, I'd have a motion, the bylaw, to confirm the proceedings.
Excuse me?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're the member from Arm Prior.
I assumed you'd carry on with new business, Warden.
I'm sorry, you're right.
Well, this Saturday, Arm Prior is hosting the Prior Palusa. It starts at 11:00 and it quits at 8:30. There will be music in the gazebo from 11:00 till 8:00, bouncy councils from 11:00 to 16:30, face painting from 12:00 to 16:00, and the first time in a long time, a beer garden from 5:30 till 9:00. At the Robert Simpson Park. Thank you.
And my favorite, the model train show at Nick Smith Center. And it's on, I believe, from 10 till 2, 10 till 4, and 10 till 2, something like that?
Supplemental from 9:00 till 12 at these glad tidings churches, free day. Everything in the parking lot in the building is free, with the exception of the organ and stuff. But all the churches get together and bring the stuff over there, and it's a, it's a free-for-all. Thank you.
Oh, good, thank you. And Deep River, please.
Thank you, Warden. And I, I didn't know the member from Arm Prior was going to provide a, an announcement to us, but I was going to preface this by saying, in keeping with Arm Prior's public service announcements, I, I would like to, to shout out one, and in large part to Mayor Grills. On Friday, May 31st, the Town of Deep River is very pleased to be hosting Mr. Peter Kenyon. As everybody knows, renowned Australian community development consultant, Peter will be conducting a building community workshop from 11:30 to 2:30 PM at the Deep River Public Library. And if anybody would like to attend, just respond to SDON@deepriver.ca.
Thank you. And Town Deep River? Sorry, Pedawawa. I gotta, I gotta start getting some sleep.
I have, I have been to Deep River. Thank you, Warden. If everybody's tooting their own horns, I guess I'll toot mine. The Town of Pedawawa on June 13th, 14th, 15th, and 16th is hosting its annual Pedawawa Civic Centre Days. This year, however, it is the 50th anniversary of the building, known as the Civic Centre, so we're going with a 70s theme. There's three nights of disco roller skating. So if any of you want to get out there and show the moves you were once able to do on the skates, without pulling muscles or serious injury, Pedawawa is the place to be. There's also a craft beer festival as well. We're not serving 70s beer, though, it's brewed fresh recently. Our second-ever Pride Festival is also on that weekend, and our Hall of Fame, Sports and Entertainment Hall of Fame induction ceremony is also on Thursday, the 13th. We've got Lloyd Moans, former NHL player, Ben Roots, fiddler for Johnny Reed, Pedawawa baseball franchise, and Mike Tronner, a wounded veteran who's now an international para-athlete. Tickets are $5 for that, and that's on the 13th. Thanks.
Very impressive. Thank you. And Silver Chain Challenge is on. And if you want to do a ride with the mayor, I'll be there more than happy to cut the ribbon as you leave or put it up for when you come back. So you can just advertise that, if you don't mind. The notices are on your desk, so if you'd let people know about that and on how to, how to record their activities. And then, as always, or now, this year especially, you want, we'd like them to share their photos. So thank you very much for taking that on. I really appreciate it because we have to win. And I'd also announce, re-announce, re- re-announce that the Wardens Golf Tournament next Friday on the 7th. So with that, I would seek a motion of adjournment, please. Oh, confirmed or by law? God. My apologies. I was headed to that, and then Arm Prior butted in. Let a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the County of Renfrew at the meeting held on May 29, 2024, be now numbered, deemed read three times and passed, is bylaw number 101-24. So can I have a mover? And I'll take Greater Matawaska and Laurentian Valley. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? None is carried. Thank you very much. And with that, a motion to adjourn, member from Amos and Bromley, seconded by a member from McNab-Brayside. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? None is carried. Thank you very much, everybody.